Ready to start?
We're there.
Yeah.
We're working very good. Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, May 5, 2025. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Can I please ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez, here. Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25, 2024, and April 11, 2025 at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Closed Session Resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed from Section 12B of the Act, and whereas that the Board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the Board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. Pending or anticipated litigation in matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, matters involving employees in terms of their employment and contract, hidden investigation involving students, other of the superintendent's evaluation, and attorney advice on a proposed confidential agreement. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist, action may be taken on any of these items stated above. May I have a motion to go into so?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. DePaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will return in approximately one hour, around 7:15.
Good evening, everyone. Let me apologize in advance for how loud I am because I don't really need a microphone. So, welcome. For those of you who don't know me, you're very lucky. No. I am Dr. Chanley. I am the very fortunate superintendent of your children, and we are so excited here this evening to have you. I have three favorite times of the year, and they're all about when we get to award recognition to your children. This evening is extra special because not only do we get to acknowledge how fantastic all of our fabulous Falcons are, but we get to start this evening with an acknowledgement of our Employees of the Year. So, we are so excited you're here to give them a round of applause as well. I will very quickly just acknowledge the people that should be acknowledged for this evening, whether it be for the efforts that we put forth to have a lovely dinner for our employees or all of the wonderful plaques, certificates that we have here this evening. Country View Farms is one of our largest donators and sponsors. I want to give them a quick shout-out. And I want to thank everyone that's involved, from sound, audio, video, custodians, secretaries, Mr. Maralda, who's our Director of Innovative Programs and many other things, as well as Ms. Zelinski and Ms. Callow. They were truly integral in making sure this evening came to what it's going to be. So, a very, very strong round of applause for them. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge our Board of Education. We have our President and Vice President here with us, with Dr. Lehman. The rest of our Board members are sitting here. I'd like to acknowledge them for their support of your children because in my famous line, success is always a team effort. And on that, no further ado. At this time, I would like our recipients from Apple Garth Elementary School. If you could hold your applause so we say all three names. We have our Teacher of the Year Samantha Foggus, our Educational Services Professional of the Year Allison Kirches, and our Educational Support Professional Nancy Agnew. If you could please come forward. Representing Barclay Elementary School, our Teacher of the Year Stephanie Yates, Educational Services Professional Keritza Barry, and our Educational Support Professional Deidra Zenni. Representing Brookside Elementary School, our Teacher of the Year Julie Freeman, Educational Services Professional Maria De Bellis, and Educational Support Professional Christopher Gross. On behalf of Mill Lake Elementary School, our Teacher of the Year Melissa Fletcher, Educational Services Professional Dr. Dana McGee, Educational Support Professional Angela Conover. Okay. Representing O'Tree Elementary School, Teacher of the Year Gabriela Guerra, Educational Services Professional Lori Wilanti, and Educational Support Professional Timothy Ferrano. Representing Woodland Elementary School, Teacher of the Year Erica Emmons, Educational Services Professional Karen Keewee, and Educational Support Professional Matthew Verdun. Representing our Transportation Department, Educational Services Professional Luz Roca. And representing Central Office, Educational Services Professional Debbie Gilinella. On behalf of Monroe Township Middle School, Teacher of the Year Bonnie Crisco, Educational Services Professional Sarah Levine, and Education Support Professional Tammy Goldstein. Representing Tom Monroe Township High School, Teacher of the Year Deanna Dale, Educational Services Professional Casey Buffalino, Educational Support Professional Sue McCourt. If we could have a nice round of applause for all of our staff recognized. As we transition over, and he's already ready. I'm trying to stay far away because I'm so loud. At this time, we're going to begin with, let us see who our first people are. Oh, opening remarks. I love to have opening remarks. Your children are the best. Thank you for giving your children to us. I don't know what else to say. They are wonderful. They do projects that give back to the community. They work extremely hard in all of their endeavors, and I do not believe they do it only for academic or civic achievement. I think they also do it for the sense of self. That is something that we like to teach to our children. We want your children to grow up as good citizens and to give back because we know the value of giving to your community. So, I'm going to give you a round of applause, and if my administrative team can join us and our Board of Ed. Thank you for partnering with us to create these amazing Falcons because they are just truly amazing. And we're ready to get started. And there we go. There you go.
I'm supposed to be far away? Okay. Hi, everyone. Welcome to our recognition. Usually, we do not have, we don't usually do it this young, but something extraordinary happened this year. A little girl came to me and was sad and was having a tough day, and she came into my office. We had a working lunch, and we talked about how she was feeling. And she told me she felt really left out. And so, I asked her why, and she told me. And I said, "Well, what do you want to do about it?" And she's like, "I want everybody to know how I feel, and I want to tell them what to do." So, Stand Up Stand In is a powerful student-created group at Mill Lake School founded by an eight-year-old Mallory Stikanowitz. She is a remarkable little girl. Mallory, why don't you come down here and stand with your friends? This is a big deal. Okay, so turn around so everybody can see your cute shirts that your mom made. After experiencing feelings of exclusion and witnessing classmates being left out, Mallory was inspired to take action. With courage and compassion well beyond her years, she created this initiative to spread awareness about the importance of inclusion, kindness, and standing up against bullying. Through student-led presentations, meaningful conversations, and peer engagement, Stand Up Stand In encourages children to be upstandards, not bystanders, and to create a school environment where everyone feels seen, accepted, and valued. Mallory's vision has not only changed her path, but has also sparked a wave of empathy and positive change amongst her peers. Mallory asked a few of her friends to join her campaign. So, these are four of the six students that Mallory chose. Mallory Stikanowitz, raise your hand and say hi. Yep. Jacob Bayak, Malia Stantora, Avery Vogel, Braylon Pony, and Leiana Chowderay. Congratulations.
So, what we're doing, just so the children don't think we forgot them, after we make all of our announcements, they're going to get their certificates over to my left with Mr. Maralda just to keep the program going. That you? Mr. Snyder, would you come forward for our Elementary Performing Arts?
Good evening, everyone. This is one of my favorite nights of the entire year where we get to honor our wonderful students in the performing arts. I can say for certain the performing arts here in Monroe Township is booming on all levels, and we have many students to honor tonight who have achieved beyond what's going on in their rehearsal rooms across the district, accolades at the region level, the state level, and even an east coast level tonight, elementary all the way through high school. Students in elementary school had the ability to be nominated for what's called Elementary Honors Band and Chorus at both the elementary and middle school sixth grade levels. This was by teacher nomination, and if accepted, got to perform with students from 40 other schools around the region in one day, putting together a concert with the music taught by their teacher right here in Monroe. Starting in middle school, the students had the ability to audition on a state level for Region Band, Chorus, and Percussion Ensemble where they competed against students from the same 40 or so schools, and we were so fortunate to have several students accepted into those prestigious ensembles and rehearsed with renowned conductors in the field that came and worked with them, and they put on a fabulous region concert. All the way through high school, where we had students compete at the region level, ninth through 12th grade. Some of those students moved on and auditioned for the NJMEA All-State Band and Choir and Orchestra, and we had students accepted into all the ensembles on a state level. This is the cherry on the top is for, I believe, the first time we had multiple students take it to the next level and be accepted into the All-Easterne Band and Choir, which is about the highest accolade you can get. We have students in band and chorus that did that. So, needless to say, I'm a very proud supervisor. There's great stuff going on in Monroe. We will start with the youngest. We will start with Apple Garth Elementary School, and I'd like to call up Dr. Graziano.
For Apple Garth, congratulations to Nicolina Latilla, Gia Lombardi, Rachel Levitt, Srishdi Mukesh, Om Patel, Abhay Praveen, Aditya Sharma, Niva Subedar, and Svanik Tanakella. Congratulations. More congratulations to the students selected for the CJMEA Elementary Honors Band. Amog Dayapa, Alia Jaramio Moro, Ria Potluri, and Srishdi Reddy Sudhi. Congratulations, students.
Mr. Sidler. Oh.
Congratulations to the six Brookside accepted nominees. Yash Anand, Arjun Dubhasi, Bella Koncharam, Ariyan Mohante, Giselle Paleyo, and Corey Reinhardt. Congratulations.
Dr. Chetto? Here she comes.
I'm very proud to announce the Elementary Honors Chorus for Woodland Elementary School. Anya Argawal, Juliana Burles, Anya Fitzgerald, Sehedge Gill, Peyton Haberly Mazzarella, Ella Montacana. I may have said that wrong. Maray Massad, Samantha Mora Rodriguez, Emily Rosario, and Arya Skervetsky. And here is our Elementary Honors Band members. Lily Gergis, Aliyan Siddiqui, Arya Savertzky again, Alexis Steinhauser, and Amelia Wood. Good job, wonderful Woodland musicians.
Good evening. We will now go over our middle school music program. I am fortunate enough today to have our directors with me. So, I'm going to ask Mr. David Ratner, Ms. Tiana Zarelli, Ms. Nina Schmetterer, and Ms. Lisa Constantino to come on up. And I ask them up. I ask them up just so they could get the recognition they deserve for all the hard work they put in. So, first, first, I will have Mr. Ratner present for the CJMEA Elementary Honors Band.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. From our Fanfare Ensemble, we had Bria Saletti, Sanjeev Ramkumar, Deepak Vermaasetti, Ishan Yol, Ryan Ho, and Sanjay Anand. Keep going with the Overture Ensemble. Come on up, guys. Grab your handshakes and your certificates down the line. The Overture Ensemble, we had Shriya Shah, Akshara Jananan, Anya Patadar, Rigveda Jani, and Vihan Pasala.
And next, I'm going to ask Ms. Tiana Zarelli to come up and present the certificate and call the names of the 2025 CJMEA Middle School Honors Band.
Thank you so much, everybody. All right. These are the students who this year participated in the Middle School Honors Band Festival. They were nominated for their hard work, and we are super proud of them. So, without further ado, the students are: Adedapo Edarabigbi, Sabal Sud, Turanika Athanarpu, Shiv Devay, Avi Jatana, Ria Kumtekar, Danielle Cugini, Anya Kamath, Arna Gupta, Ruth Visri Harish Kumar, Srihan Madhugapu, Krish Katri, Joel Oriendo, Sravya Konapati, Umanath Kumar, Shreya Engappen, Sanav Nandish, and Amog Swargam. Thank you. I have three more. I'm going to be up here for a minute.
Okay. Once again, Ms. Zarelli will present to our 2025 NJAE Region 2 Jazz Ensemble as well as our CJEA Intermediate Percussion Ensemble.
All right. Our participants in the 2025 Region Jazz Ensemble are some of the top middle school jazz musicians from across central New Jersey. So, without further ado, Anbini Ademulam, Ava Esser, Maya Pai, and Sharvo Srinivasan. I'm just going to keep it rolling because I have two more categories after this. All right, for the Intermediate Percussion Ensemble, we have, again, Anbini Adamulam, Jackson Berkuta, Carmine Corona, Darren Gerold Raj,
Ms. Zarelli and Mr. Ratner have been very busy this year. 2025 CJMEA Intermediate Region Symphonic Band and the 2025 CJMEA Intermediate Region Wind Ensemble, Ms. Zarelli.
All right, our two participants for the Intermediate Region Symphonic Band are And last but not least, from me, and then we will continue moving on in the program, we have the Intermediate Region Wind Ensemble, Swanik Bari, Prishdi Magani,
Moving over to our MTMS Chorus, I would like to ask Ms. Nina Schmetterer and Lisa Constantino to come up to present the students for the 2025 CJMEA Intermediate Region Choir.
Okay, starting from the top. We have Manya Oroju, Parisa Ahmed, Aksheni Akula, Ishani Balaji, Carmen Chatwal. I would just like to note that Carmen did this for three years in a row, so bravo to Carmen. Aditya Devella, Tahina Debkumar, Jason Frederick, Quatic Gadjum, Vanya Gadancha, Nikita Ganesh Pandi, Vedanti Kapari, Giselle Kapoor, Hansini Komatipali, Anjali Menon, Akshaj, otherwise known as AJ, Narayana, Joelle Nidla, Anvita Palori, Christine Rodriguez, Kenzie Samuel, Asleisha Ashishende, Sana Sharm, Sanjana Sabramanian, Ryan Tewari, Krish Venkata, and Govartini Venkatesh. And the rest are sixth graders with Ms. Constantino.
For our sixth graders, we have Adiya Diddila, Gerdip Kalsi Kor, Moli Maria, Isana Matthew, Shakdi McUndrage, Adya Rajah, Sana Shah, Kailash Venkath, and Maisha Kaushik.
Nice round of applause. Dr. Higgins, you're up.
Thank you. We're very proud of all of our performers at the high school. To announce our CGMEA Band Participants, call to the mic Mr. Griffin. Mr. Marty Griffin, who is here. Who we got first? Okay, this is CJMEA High School Region Symphonic Band, Eric Crowley, Noel Chang, Lucas Cipriasso, Sean Alvaranga, Our 2025 CJMEA High School Region Orchestra, Aman Patel. High School Region Percussion Ensemble, Arush Abhilash, Noel Chang, Eric Crowley, Aiden Lin, Preston Masigla, And the High School Region Wind Ensemble, Preston Masigla, Aiden Lin. Next, New Jersey All-State Wind Ensemble, All-State Band, Eric Crowley, Preston Masigla. All-State Symphonic Band, Aiden Lin, Edward Testinus. The Region Two Junior High Jazz Ensemble, Jess Carr and Kayla, Edward Testinus, And there they are again, right? These were the two students chosen for the All Eastern Band this year. Next, we have the 2025 WGI Power Ease Percussion Regional Champions. Third year in a row, actually. Let's call them up if they're here. Arush Abhilash, Aiden Barakiva, Rayon Bora, Noel Chang, Eric Crowley, Aiden Lin, Preston Masigla, Arav Narwal, Vikram Ranganath, Advik Sivakumar, Sai Takale, Serena Valentine, All right, and I'll read these, there's a bunch of names, not sure who's here, but the 2025 High School Wind Ensemble students chosen to perform in the State Concert Band Gala at TCNJ. Here we go. Arush Abhilash, Aditya Chari, Tarun Adanki, Dotun Adarabigbi, Sean Alvaranga, Adrishya Amareesh, Sahisha Amareesh, Aiden Barakiva, Matthew Basili, Siddharth Chintipali, Brody Chang, Lucas Cipriasso, Emily Cugini, Avini Gambrewala, Ishan Gandhi, Hari Kumar Ganesh, Andrew Giacominie, Gavin Grupuso, Ananya Harem, Jacob Jerusiewicz, Sakshi Kail, Aditya Kamath, Pernav Kovey, Emma Kwan, Kay Lana, Justin Lau, Ava Lee Young, Aniha Mathur, Aryan Mathur, Shloke Meghani, Kirtan Mendy, Jaden Newell, Kyle Path, Ishan Patel, Aryan Pothakamuri, Anyarana, Ankith Ravidran, Will Rucktuschel, Avika Sanchetti, Arushi Sarkar, Pooja Shukla, Harasi Singh, Rian Situ, Natish Sunku, Manvith Thavutum, Edward Testinus, If you don't mind, before we finish up, I just want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Griffin. After many, many years of leading, directing, and doing everything as a, as a, as a master percussionist here at MTHS, Mr. Griffin will be retiring at the end of this year, actually the beginning of next year, after so many years at the high school. We just want to say thank you to him, thank you to everything he's done for all our kids. Continuing with the high school, we have our 2025 CJMEA Region Two Mixed Chorus, Sai Brenda Bupatiraju, Emily Cugini, Ivana Samuel, Serena Valentine, Lasini Kavuri, Shania Tewari, Shifa Satia, Our Region Treble Chorus, Sanvi Shringari, Tanya Kumar, Shriya Sendapataiyam, Gabrielle Cioci, Sanvi Tati, Manavvi Hugar, and Lesika Kana. Our 2025 All-State Mixed Chorus, Sehaj Chada, Emily Cugini, Sanvi Tati, Serena Valentine, Shania Tewari, Jacob Jerusiewicz, Our 2025 All-State Treble Chorus, Sai Brenda Bupatiraju, Ivana Samuel, Sanvi Shringari, and Gabriel Cioci. And our 2025 All Eastern Mixed Chorus, these are the two members that made it on to All Eastern, Sanvi Tati and Vincent Wilson. At this time, I will invite my colleague, Dr., oop, nope, I'm sorry, not doctor, sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Steve Barandica, and I'm the Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Programs here. Tonight, I am honored for the opportunity to acknowledge a great group of young women who not only excelled during the season, but also in the postseason as they represented us at the Americhair Internationals in Orlando on March 15th and 16th. First, I will begin with our MTHS Purple Intermediate Competition Team. They earned international, intermediate, I'm sorry, All Music Large National Champions as well as Division High Point Champions. When you hear your name, please come up. Kayla Alexandrowski, Colby Bacon, Peyton Badiak, Jaslyn Bennett, Emily Boyle, Riley Boyham, Valentina Calo, Jaclyn Saris, Sophia Dalier, Madeline De Royan, Ava Fahy, Victoria Fierdalisso, Alexa Grippa, Emily Jax, Emma Kerbinsade, Lyra Luho, Alexa Marquez, Juliana Marrera, Alyssa Puglia, Tori Shiner, Bella Rojas, Eliana Razin, Addison Shea, Francesca Sparrow, Victoria Sparrow, Avery Stern, Next up, we have our MTHS Gold Advanced Competition Team. They, they were the Advanced All Music Large National Champions. Meredith Armstrong, Catherine Blundell, Mackenzie Casey, Rachel Chaketti, Juliana Dowd, Colby Fernandez, Valentina Gonzalez Jaszkiewicz, Isabella Grippa, Brynlee Hoyt, Lila Kika, Jenna Lugo, Angelina Mayo, Daniella Mayo, Nicolette Mayo, Alexa Path, Gabriella Petralia, Brianna Prizbuzuski, Summer Reneo, Juliana Scoody, Leah Scoody, Krista Tramontana, and Delilah Updale.
I am just back to introduce Dr. Kelly Rozell. I knew you were coming up soon.
All right, I am going to introduce the recipients of the 2025 New Jersey Seal of Biliteracy. The Seal of Biliteracy is awarded to students who demonstrate proficiency both in English and a second language. So the students who earn the seal in Spanish. Anthony Angamarka Tenapagway, Rea Basra, Matthew Basili, Chrissia Bernal Ramirez, Jada Coleman, Sumi Cordero Barberan, Nevada Deepak, Stefano Espinoza Flores, Melanie Euphrasia Dominguez, Michael Ferrero Zambrano, Leskin Garcia Vega. Leskin Garcia Vega, Martha Hirone Ortiz, Melena Macera, Stephen Martinez Vidal, Emmeline Marino Cruz, Caesar Mintalo Enkalada, Edgar Molinaros Cristales, Jessica Moran Caro, Akilin Prabhu, Anya Rana, Henry Rosales Mercado, Taj Soni, Daniella Vasquez Veda, Sorayu Beju, Daisy Velazquez. Next, we have two students for French, Sri Ram Kalori and Hamzika Yadavali, Druvi Desai for Gujarati, Ashika Gandhi, Anika Tandon, and Sai Takali for Hindi, Eva Masiek, and Misa Udogan for Italian, for Latin, Rayan Bora, and Anuj Kakumanu. Portuguese, Alexandra Cabrera, Tamil, Anlean Davina Gerald Raj, and Vipin Submaranian. In Ukrainian, Bogdan Malukin. And finally, we have two students who earned the Seal of Bileiteracy in both Arabic and Spanish. Zain Jabber and Janet Zenun. Excellent work. Congratulations.
Yes, at this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Danielle Drust.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. David Rothman. He is a representative from the Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial.
Okay, thank you. You know, Henry Rickles was a soldier who, in World War II, helped liberate a camp. He came back here, he retired, and he moved to Clearbrook. And 40 years ago, we had our first day of remembrance from the time. What we have done is bring some survivors from the Holocaust to go speak before the freshman class each year. And we are so fortunate that, after they listen to them, we then give them a challenge. Would you like to write an essay? You're not going to get a grade for it, but write an essay about what are the learnings that you had from learning about the Holocaust? What could it happen again? Could it happen in the United States? And third, if you came in front of a Holocaust denier, what would you do or say? We asked that. We got a number of essays back this year, and three were not good, not great, outstanding. And we have their awards and want to announce them today, if you will.
Our three award winners this year are Sam Devonahali, Sorayu Rayala, and Sean Rosen.
We have been challenged by the school superintendent. So next year, we're not only going to have Holocaust survivors before the freshman class, we're also going to middle school as well. So thank you for the challenge.
If I could ask Dr. Higgins from the middle school to join me? I'm sure those of you may have heard, but we had a very unfortunate situation that occurred. We had one of our students who had a situation where she wound up engaging herself with fire, and it caused her person to wind up going on fire in certain areas. And it's an unfortunate situation. It could happen. It could happen in any building. It could happen in any school. We keep in touch with the parent, checking on the child. She's getting better and better, which we're very, very happy about. But there were two individuals in that classroom when this occurred. And I would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge as a community that heroism, the immediacy of not even thinking, but doing what needs to be done. Both the teacher, who I'm going to acknowledge this evening, and the student immediately came to the aid of the child. The student grabbed the fire extinguisher, and the teacher placed her own hands on this child to try and pat out the fire. Those two people here, I hope are here this evening. One is our teacher of Family Consumer Science, Ms. Laura Coletti. Is she present? And our student, who beyond impressed me in a sense of danger and a sense of emergency, Iman Sadhu. I'd like to thank Dr. Higgins, who was present on site, who immediately called me, and I joined him on site. We were very fortunate that the entire team of teachers and students knew what they needed to do under Dr. Higgins' direction, as well as working directly collaboratively with the Monroe Township Police Department and the Monroe Township Fire Department. And I have to give a shout out that on Wednesday, the mayor will also be acknowledging these two heroes. They are our Falcon heroes. At this time, I'd like to say thank you for your patience while you sat through the entire program. At this time, we will be going back to the library, at which time, we have to. Tonight's Board of Education meeting will then recommence. Thank you again, and have a fabulous Falcon evening.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We are going to resume our meeting here. So the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. So the first minutes for us to approve are the Public Board of Education Meeting Minutes from March 17, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. Bora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any absentions, recusals? Okay, next is the closed session meeting minutes from March 17, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. De Payne. Are there... All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions, discussion?
Abstain.
Abstain for Mr. Zeigner. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question, Ms. Ratner?
I was abstaining. I was just waiting.
Oh, okay. Mr. Zeigner abstained, and...
Abstain on the portion where conflict exists.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then the next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Reports.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I'll start off with Barclay Brook Elementary School. So Barclay Brook has continued its collaboration with Parker at Monroe. Residents from the facility visited Barclay Brook School and participated in a STEAMaker activity with a group of second-grade students. Together, these students and residents planned and created SEL badges using TinkerCad. Thank you to Parker at Monroe for this continued collaboration. During the week of April 7, Barclay Brook students were encouraged to show kindness, gratitude, and encouragement. Each day, there was a themed kindness activity, including bringing in canned food items to benefit a local food pantry and showing kindness at home and at school. Barclay Brook School participated in the Police Unity Tour fundraiser on Wednesday, April 23. Barclay Brook students and staff were invited to dress in their pajamas and donate $1 to their Monroe Township Police Officers who are participating in the 2025 Police Unity Tour. This organization raises awareness for fallen officers killed in the line of duty, and some of our own township officers will be riding in their remembrance. April 24 was Bring Your Child to Work Day. It was such a fun day to have the children of the Barclay Brook staff members join them for the day. Barclay Brook was honored to host Monroe Township's annual Arbor Day Celebration on Friday, April 25. Members of the Monroe Township Shade Tree Commission joined members of the Town Council, District Administration, and two classes from Barclay Brook School to commemorate the day with the planting of a tree in front of the school. The students who participated in the ceremony each received a tube seedling to bring home and plant. It was a fun and educational event to commemorate Arbor Day. Next up is Brookside Elementary School. On April 11, their fourth grade had a poetry day. The students enjoyed learning about all different types of poetry, such as diamante and haiku, by visiting each one of the fourth-grade classrooms. Brookside was proud to support the Police Unity Tour as well by having a pajama day on April 23, and they raised approximately $300. On April 30, their third-grade classes visited the Enviro Mobile. Thank you to Monroe Township for presenting to their students. The students had fun learning about the strategies for reducing, reusing, and recycling. And Brookside will be administering NJSLA testing from May 5 to 8, and on the 12th and 13th. Next up is Mill Lake Elementary School. Since their March meeting, Mill Lake has been buzzing with energy, meaningful student engagement, and strong community collaboration. They've had a truly dynamic and productive stretch filled with activities that reflect the heart of their school. Their student-led Stand Up/Stand In group wrapped up a powerful week of preparation and presentations focused on inclusion and empathy, and they'll continue spreading their message by working with their first and second graders throughout May. We were also fortunate to welcome back our beloved therapy dog, Maya Kara, and students across multiple grade levels had the opportunity to read to her, strengthening both literacy skills and emotional connections. Mill Lake proudly hosted another successful Unified Gym event where Monroe Township High School students joined them for an inclusive and joy-filled session with their students. These moments of connection highlight the power of partnership and belonging within our school district. The SEL, Social Emotional Learning Assemblies, for March and April celebrated individual and grade-level growth, reinforcing their shared commitment to emotional well-being and student success. The dedicated Woodland Mill Lake PTO continues to work tirelessly, saving the schools planning for end-of-year celebrations, including student transition visits, Field Day, and their upcoming Mother's Day Flower Sale from May 5 to 7. Their enthusiasm and support help keep Mill Lake thriving. The school is also gearing up for the Mill Lake Woodland Art Show, which will be hosted here on May 14, here as in at Mill Lake, from 5:30 to 7:30. The students' creativity is sure to shine. And finally, they're thrilled to kick off their staff appreciation events with wonderful planning from Mrs. Garcia and Mrs. S, and generous support from our PTO. We'll be celebrating our incredible educators and staff in style. Thank you to everyone who contributes to make Mill Lake a joyful, inclusive, and inspiring place to grow. Up next is Woodland Elementary School. The students there attended the monthly SEL Character Goal Assembly focusing on respect. Woodland students and staff celebrated neurodiversity with Fun and Inspirational Spirit Days, including a project that connected the high school with the wonderful Woodland School students and opportunities for their PALS program. Fourth and fifth-grade classrooms had their students engage in Monroe Day activities. The Monroe Township High School visited their school and collaborated with the PALS students as well. Earth Day was observed with the Monroe Township Public Works Department Enviro Mobile and a trash-free picnic coordinated by the Student Council. A free assembly funded by the EPA and NJ Recycling and Litter Abatement Communities brought an educational assembly to the students regarding recycling and litter. All students participated in the math league contest as well, and students supported the Monroe Township Police Department Unity Tour with the PJ Day as well. Up next is Oak Tree Elementary School. May 5 through 9, they'll be celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, filled with an assortment of wonderful treats and activities sponsored by the PTA. May 12 to 16 will be World Cup Soccer, where all classes participate in soccer games to show off their new skills. May 19 to 22, the NJSLA testing will occur for Grade III. May 27, Unified Field Day will take place, and on May 30, the Oak Tree Field Day will take place. Up next, we have Monroe Township Middle School. On March 18, the MTMS Wind Ensemble performed at the CJMEA High School Concert Band Festival. They were the only middle-school group invited to perform at this three-day festival and got the opportunity to watch some of the top ensembles from across the state. Furthermore, this is the first time ever that one of the middle-school groups was invited to perform at a high-school-only event. And the best part is that they earned a Silver Rating for their performance, which is huge for a middle-school group. The students were given very difficult music, and they rose to the occasion to represent their school. Many years ago, a Silver Rating would have been a significant accomplishment for the high-school groups. So it's very special to be a part of this amazing era for the Monroe Township School District bands. In March, the middle-school hosted its annual eighth-grade health fair. Representatives in the medical field were on-site, sharing health tips with the eighth graders. And they were fortunate enough to have eighth graders from Jamesburg join them once again for this wonderful event. On Saturday, April 26, the Monroe Township Middle School Teachers and Builders Club Advisors, Ms. S. and Mr. Fields, took part in the Walk for Wishes event at the American Dream Mall, supporting the Make-A-Wish Foundation's mission to raise funds for children with critical illnesses. On May 8, from 5 to 7 p.m., the Monroe Township Middle School will be holding its annual art exhibit, where their talented art students show off their skills in a variety of media, from traditional art skills to computer-generated art to 3D art. So please join them. On April 23, 25, and 28, the middle-school held its annual LEED graduations. This event celebrates the sixth-grade successful completion of the LEED program. Their proud sixth-grade parents joined them to celebrate their children as well. The middle-school will also begin NJSLA testing tomorrow with the sixth and seventh grade leading off, followed next week by the eighth grade. The middle-school is proud to announce that two of their students won the Nature Poetry and Photography Contest, sponsored by the Monroe Township Public Library. First place went to Shrinika Kakuru, and second place to Sanya Chainani. And last but not least, Monroe Township High School updates. First, a few recognitions. Congratulations to Shrey Palah, selected as this year's O'Me Foundation Ambassador. Congrats to Charlotte Bertoni, this year's recipient of the NJPSA Student Leadership Scholarship. And congratulations to Lance Lozy as the recipient of the Middlesex County Secondary Principals Association Outstanding Student Award. As we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week throughout the school district this week, the high-school wants to take a moment to recognize and thank the incredible educators who make our school such a special place. Each day, our teachers bring dedication, creativity, and compassion into their classrooms, helping our students grow not just academically, but as individuals ready to take on the world. This week, we all encourage everyone to join us in showing our gratitude. Make our teachers feel appreciated with a kind note, a small gesture, or simply saying thank you. We sincerely appreciate our teachers. And also, please try and join over 1,500 participants in the Eighth Annual O'Me Memorial 5K Run and Walk this Sunday, May 18, next Sunday, May 18, in Thompson Park. The O'Me Foundation continues to fund pediatric cancer research and support community families impacted by pediatric cancers. Siona, my other rep, couldn't be here with me today, so thank you for listening to me this entire time. I appreciate it, and have a good evening, everyone.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for giving that report all on your own. It was, as always, very comprehensive, and usually you get to split it, so thank you very much for taking the time. Ms. Ratner?
I think, oh, there we go. I also just wanted to give a shout out to Siash for the Little Mermaid presentation, not presentation, she wrote production. There we go. She was Sebastian, and she did a fantastic job, as did the rest of the students, so.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Presentation and Public Hearing of the 2025-2026 Final Budget.
Dr. Shealy?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Rather than turn around, I'm going to use my paper copy. Hopefully, it'll match. So we had an opportunity, I'm not sure when, it was so long ago, March? Does that sound right?
March.
In March. For many, for those of you that may or may not know, we worked very diligently to keep all of our current programs work within the confines of our enrollment for our staffing and not have to go out for an additional question. That being said, there was a presentation given back in September or October, which is normally quite earlier than we normally would do that. But for purposes of clarification and making sure that everyone feels that they heard what they heard and needed to hear and needed to see, we took some comments regarding the size and the concern with things not being visible, and we hope that we did a better job. So on that note, budget presentation, which was done, like I said, in March 25-26, we always begin with, of course, our acknowledgement of our Monroe Township Board of Education. It is always our efforts and our desire to work in consort for children, and children should always be at the paramount of everything that we do. We also want to give a shout out to our MTBOE Finance Committee, chaired by Ms. Bora, and then Ms. Usha Sharma, Dr. Amanda Peck, Mr. P. Piero, and of course, President Fabiana are all present on that because we like to work. Although we make the recommendations, we like to work in collaboration where it is appropriate with our finance committee. One more. In order to know where you're going, you need to have a desired outcome. Whether it be in education, business professional, it makes no difference whether it's public or private sector. You must have a vision statement and a mission statement, because it's imperative that everybody is on the same page. We are hopeful that at the end of the vision statement and mission statement, which I'm not going to read to you, which is right in front of you, the bottom line are your children, our children. If the efforts and the work that we do collaboratively do not end in what's best for children, then we are not following our own vision or mission. So I think it's imperative, whether it's financial, whether it's personnel, whether it's any area, we make sure that the end results and the decisions that we make are all about the kids. So in our executive summary, our Monroe Township School Budget for the 25-26 school year was developed within the specific parameters set forth by the Board's Philosophy Directive. We needed to meet the needs of almost 7,000 children. The budget should be professionally constructed to afford every student opportunity for exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and secure environment. That's the personnel issue, making sure we have the best leaders, and then in turn, the best teachers. Opportunity made available through a comprehensive curriculum which offers diverse offerings in co-curricular clubs and activities. Sometimes, you may or may not have heard the word adequacy. We are not adequate, we are better than adequate. The state mandates that your programs that you have must meet adequacy. Anything above adequacy is not needed. Well, in the eyes of every Monroe, committee member, community member, parent, teacher, administrator, anyone, custodian, secretary, our children are not average, and therefore, we will not provide them with average opportunities. And what that does is, that is how we get to our budget. The majority of our programs are above adequacy, and we are very proud to say that not one program has been cut regarding anything that is appropriate for children. And lastly, the Monroe Township Schools District believes that our proposed budget continues to become more efficient as evidenced by a successful county budget efficiency review, whereas Monroe was exemplified for many best financial practices. The next key budgetary considerations. Of course, we are required to make sure that we follow all the New Jersey Department of Education Student Learning Standards, student-teacher ratio, maintain the programs that we currently have, look at our aging facilities and what can be done. We're in the process right now, as we were able to partner with the township, and we were able to also get a ROD grant that we are spending $10 million to make Apple Goth brand new. So we're very excited that we are giving attention to our aging facilities. And of course, looking at transportation. We always want to entice the best drivers and have the best transportation department possible, because as you have probably heard me say before, the first classroom is the bus. Timeline. Timeline is very different this year, because we really wanted to know ahead of time if we thought we would need to go out for an additional question. We started in September 2024, General Monroe Township Board of Education Meeting. We had the philosophy discussion. November through December, we had budget defense rounds, which I will very clearly explain. It's very easy. Basically, all of the budgets go out to the individual schools. We have meetings with the principals and sometimes vice principals who have already met with the supervisors, because of course, that involves curriculum and programming. We meet with them, and we say, what you want, what you need, what you must have, because that's the way how you have to do a budget, even if it's our own home. We all want to drive a fancy car, we all want to go to Italy, we all want to go to Disney World, but can we afford it? So we look at those parameters. We additionally work with the Director of People Personnel Services, who in turn works with their, her special education supervisors. We work with transportation, we work with facilities, our facilities director, Mr. Tag. We look at all of these things, and we make decisions, and we make recommendations. Ultimately, our goal is to make sure the must-haves we have and the wants and the needs we have to the best of our ability. Sometimes you want something, but it's not a must-have, and therefore, it's something that we cannot give. But we, like I keep on saying, we are very proud that the programs that we have provided for your children, for our children, are still there. Then, we draft, then we get our state aid announcement February 27th. I was very excited that I had a, I won't say I had a bet, because that is not appropriate. I will say that I made a decision that we would not lose state aid, like many districts around us, because we don't get much. So I thought they would have mercy on us, because we really get so little when everybody else gets so much. Why would they take anything? We only go, we just get around $12 million, $11 million. So I had said to Ms. Allen, I bet you, not really a bet, for Facebook purposes, I did not bet in any way, no money changed hands, I made the statement, it is my belief, and you come and tell me if I'm right, that we will not lose any state aid, we'll get a couple of dollars. We got approximately $30,000 more. And I was very happy. But one of the things that made me feel very, very competent and confident as the leader of this district, working in compilation with Ms. Allen and Dr. Layman, is that we have always worked within the parameters of monies that were given, because we get very little. Surrounding districts get hundreds of millions of dollars, and we get 10 and change, 11 and change, 12 and change. So because of that, we have been expedient, we have been cognizant, we have been thoughtful in where the money goes, how we allocate the staff, how we must allow enrollment to be the basis for what our staff looks like. And we start to think out of the box to see if we could do things a little bit better and a little bit differently, and perhaps save some money. So that is why I felt so confident that we put together a quality budget. March 12th and 13th, the draft budget review administration with the Monroe Township Board of Education, and then, as you can see, so on and so forth, general board meeting, March 17th, and this evening, the general board of education meeting, budget hearing, and adoption. As you can see from the continued guidelines, as you may or may not have noticed, without intentionally placing this on Cinco de Mayo today, and last time, I believe it was St. Patrick's Day, we do apologize, but we follow the constraints of what the state puts out of when things have to be done, and that's why they were switched to Mondays. At this time, I want to thank you so much for your attention. I will be turning over the presentation to our business administrator, Ms. Allen.
Okay, so moving on to the next slide. Where does the money come from? As you can see from the pie chart, the majority of our revenue, 85%, comes from the local tax levy. This includes both the general fund tax levy and the debt service tax levy. Our second-largest source of revenue, state aid, represents merely 8% of our total budget, and federal aid is less than 1%. 2.8% is derived from tuition revenue, which includes tuition from both Jamesburg and our enrichment programs. Fund balance at 1.9% is the excess surplus from the 23-24 school year, as certified by the auditor, which is statutorily required to be included as a revenue source in the 25-26 budget. The balance of the revenues consists of miscellaneous revenues transferred from another fund and transportation fees, all at less than 1%. So the next slide shows the general fund tax levy for 25-26. We are allowed to grow our general fund tax levy by 2% each year, plus any allowable adjustments. It is important to note that the 2% increase applies only to the tax levy and not the entire budget. The 24-25 general fund tax levy inflated by 2% is $122.6 million. We have an allowable adjustment to the general fund tax levy for an increase in healthcare costs of $2.5 million. The healthcare adjustment applies to districts with a projected increase in healthcare costs that exceed 2% of the pre-budget year. The allowable adjustment cannot exceed the average percentage increase of the state health benefit plan that is determined annually by the Division of Pensions and Benefits, which is 14% for 25-26. So simply put, the increase above 2%, up to 14%, represents an adjustment for healthcare costs, and this is calculated by the state budget program. The total general fund tax levy cap with the healthcare adjustment is $125 million. The next slide shows the general fund state aid comparison between the two years. Our 25-26 state aid award reflects some changes that the DOA has made to the state aid formula calculations. Our total categorical state aid increased by $33,612 to $12.3 million. And while this is a small increase, we were fortunate to not lose aid, as many other districts did. We were initially informed by the county to plan on a 10% reduction, and then we were told to plan on 3% reduction, so we fared better than expected. So I will briefly explain how the state aid amounts are calculated. So transportation increased by $151,000 to $4.1 million. And although we have a lesser number of transported students in total this year, the cost coefficients for the per-people base amount and mileage amounts used in the state formulas increased 3.9%. Transportation is comprised of two calculations, basically one for regular education and one for our special education. And it takes into account the number of students being transported, multiplied by a base per-people amount, as well as the base mileage rate multiplied by average distance. Security aid increased by $283,000 to $964,000. Security aid is based on projected enrollment, as calculated by the DOE, multiplied by a per-people amount. The per-people amount, as determined by the DOE, increased 45% for 25-26 to $140 per student. And there is an additional amount of $107 added for low-income enrollment. It should be noted that our projected enrollment shows a decrease, which affects this calculation. Special education aid, our largest amount, actually decreased by $400,000 for a total of $7.1 million. Why did it decrease? Because of a change in how special education enrollment is determined. Prior to 25-26, this number was based on a statewide average. In other words, if statewide, the special education enrollment was 15.9% of total enrollment, then each district would use that same percentage, multiplied by their actual total enrollment, to determine their special education enrollment. That amount is then multiplied by a base per-people amount, as determined by the state, to be $23,172. That has increased by 5.9%. For 25-26, the calculation has been revised to use the district's actual special education enrollment numbers as opposed to a statewide average. Unfortunately, this did not work in our favor, as our percentage is lower. Additionally, the total special education amount calculated, $21.5 million, is then split. Two-thirds goes to equalization aid, of which we do not receive, leaving only the remaining 1/3 for the special education amount that we do receive. That equates to $14.3 million allocated to equalization aid and $7.2 million allocated to special education that we do receive. The equalization aid formula has changed to a three-year average, but does not apply to us. The calculated local fare share, which is based on district property values and income, is $189 million versus our adequacy budget of $122 million. So you see, there is a wide gap there. The next slide is, actually not this slide, the schedule of revenues combined. So this is a separate handout or something you can click on. And it details the sources of revenues for both the budgeted 25-26 school year, as well as the current 24-25 school year, as adjusted for comparison purposes. Looking at fund balance, we have excess surplus in the amount of $2.9 million to include as a revenue source. Again, this amount is certified by the auditor and is statutorily required to be included as a revenue source in the 25-26 budget. Transfers from other funds represent an amount anticipated to be transferred from Falcon Care ECE surplus in the amount of $275,000. We've already discussed general fund tax levy. And then, other revenue consists of tuition, transportation fees, and miscellaneous revenue. Tuition from Jamesburg is budgeted at $4.2 million, which is based on 275 students at $15,500. Enrichment programs are budgeted at $176,000 and include summer programs, as well as after-school programs. Transportation fees from Jamesburg are budgeted at $239,000, as calculated and certified on the DRTRS, reported to the state. Miscellaneous revenues include interest income, use of building fees, integrated pre-k tuition, athletic admissions, et cetera, and are budgeted to remain flat at $850,000. We have discussed categorical state aid. We did receive an additional $300,000 for 24-25, allocated from the state budget that we cannot anticipate for 25-26. And then, extraordinary aid is conservatively budgeted at a flat amount, as there is no guarantee to the amount we will be awarded, as that is application-based. Federal aid, which consists of semi-reimbursements, has decreased from $83,000 to $16,000. And that is for the Special Ed Medicaid Initiative. And this is a federal program that reimburses districts a portion of the costs of certain Medicaid-covered services provided to Medicaid-eligible special ed students. So total general fund revenues for 25-26 total $146.6 million, which is an increase of $4.1 million over the 24-25 budgeted revenues, or 2.87%. Special revenue fund consists of federal and state grants awarded. As we have done historically, and as advised by the county, we conservatively budget 85% of the current year award as revenue. It should be noted that accordingly, we also only budget for 85% of the grant appropriations, as revenues must equal appropriations, and carryovers are not budgeted. So this amounts to $1.4 million. The majority of our grant funding is for IDEA, which we use for out-of-district tuition. The other grants we receive every year are the title funds. Debt service funds consist of debt service tax levy in the amount of $10.9 million and debt service state aid in the amount of $280,000. These funds are used strictly for the payment of bond principal and interest from previous bond referendums approved by the voters and refundings. In summary, total revenue, including general fund, special revenue fund, and debt service fund, is budgeted at $159.3 million for 25-26, which is a 2.21% increase in the amount of $3.4 million. The next slide is where does the money go? As you can see by the pie chart, 49% of the budget is for direct instructional costs, which include regular education, special education, related services, and tuition, but does not include benefits allocated to the instructional staff. Benefits for all staff are shown separately and amount to 21% of the budget. Facilities comprises 8% of the budget and includes required maintenance for school facilities. facilities, custodial services, care and upkeep of grounds, and security. Debt service at 7 percent represents payments of principal and interest on our bonds. Transportation costs represent 6 percent, athletics and co-curricular 1 percent, et cetera. So next is Schedule B, which shows a comparison of appropriations, and I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights, and that is a separate handout with a detailed listing. So under the first section, "Regular Programs Instruction," you will note that there is a 16 percent decrease in instructional supplies, and the principals have done an outstanding job of reducing their budgets to what is necessary. There is also a continued effort, thanks to Mr. Feldman, to use less toner, which saves a great deal of money. Included in the "Other Purchased Services" line item is the first payment of the new four-year iPad refresh for the high school. In the past, the refresh was a three-year payment plan, and by stretching it to four years, there is a lesser impact each year to the budget. Thank you again, Mr. Feldman, for negotiating this deal, where we are paying a lower per-unit cost than we have in the past. Offsetting the first-year payment is an anticipated amount to be realized from the sale of the old iPads. Also within the same line item is the proposed lease purchase for '25-'26. So we typically include equipment items in a five-year lease purchase in order to align the cost of the equipment to the life of the equipment. So some of the items we would include this year are technology, equipment, textbooks, copiers, musical instruments, and custodial equipment. The next sections, "Special Education," "Basic Skills," "Bilingual," are fairly consistent and are driven by student needs. Out-of-district tuition costs are increasing by 25 percent. That amount is actually higher, as we use the IDEA grant as well to pay for out-of-district costs. Moving to operations and maintenance of plant services, we are looking at a 20 percent increase in electricity costs. Insurance costs are expected to increase by an estimated 15 to 20 percent. Transportation shows some changes between budget lines. The Transportation Director has provided a budget where she plans to revamp some of the routes, bringing some of the contracted routes back in-house, hiring some new bus drivers to run those routes, as well as putting some routes out to bid with other than ESCNJ. We discussed employee benefits and what is included, and essentially, $2.5 million of the increase shown is offset by the healthcare adjustment. Regarding capital outlay, the '24-'25 budget includes amounts appropriated for the refurbishment of the special services parking lot, the design study for roof replacement at Mill Lake, the additional $300,000 state aid received for capital improvements, and the debt service for STEA funding, as well as some small equipment. The $300,000 is being used for a transformer, hot water heater, fire alarm system, and the Brookside Library project. For '25-'26, we are budgeting for the debt service for STEA funding only. We were able to do so because of the $10 million in ROD grant projects at Applegart, which are accounted for outside of the operating budget, thereby having no effect and providing room for other necessary items. I can't thank the township enough for their $5 million contribution to increase to these projects, which we could have not done without them. Also, the ESIP program that the board has approved and will provide approximately $12 million in energy improvements without increasing our budget, and many thanks to Mr. Tagg for all his work with these projects. In summary, total appropriations are budgeted to increase by 2.21 percent, or $3.4 million to $159.3 million. So the next slide shows the tax impact of the '25-'26 budget. On an average assessed home of $336,000, the tax increase for the year would be $161, or $48 for every $100,000. This represents a 3.23 percent increase over the prior-year tax rate. So how is the tax rate determined? Moving to the next slide, the tax rate is based on the relationship of just two numbers, the school tax levy divided by the ratables. Ratables represent the net taxable valuation of the township. It is important to understand that ratables are completely out of our control. The school board has absolutely no role in this. The higher the ratables, the lower the tax rate. This chart shows the ratables for the last three years. As you can see, the ratables have increased less than 1 percent this year. Last year, the ratables increased 3.4 percent. In dollars, in the prior year, the ratable increase was $254 million. The current year increase is $78 million. This is a 70 percent reduction. Last year produced the largest increase in ratables in the last 10 years, which greatly decreased the tax rate. In fact, I believe it's only been higher twice in the last 28 years. So last year was a phenomenal year for the ratables, which in turn was great for the school tax rate, and we had no control over that either. Conversely, this year reflects the lowest increase in ratables in 11 years, which has greatly increased the tax rate. So moving to the next slide, the second factor in the tax rate calculation is the school tax levy. The lower the school tax levy, the lower the tax rate. It is important to note that the township and the district run on two different years. The district operates from budget to budget, which is July 1st through June 30th. The township is calendar-year based, thus the tax rate is calendar-year based. So what does this mean? One-half of our school tax levy will always be deferred to the next year. So last year, the voters approved a second question for a permanent increase to the tax, to the school tax levy of $2.7 million. So one-half of that was included in the tax rate determined with the '24-'25 budget, whereas the full amount is included in this budget's tax rate. So this chart details the school tax levy on a calendar-year basis, and these are the amounts used in the tax rate calculation. As you can see, the increase has grown from 2.1 percent to 3.55 percent last year to 4.17 percent this year. The next chart details the school tax levy on a school-year basis, and these are the amounts that our budgets are based on and that appear in our budgets. As you can see, the school tax levy in our budget increased from 2.5 percent to 4.56 percent in '24-'25 and decreased to 3.79 percent for '25-'26. And then the last chart shows the calculation of tax rate using the amounts from the previous charts. By dividing the school tax levy by the ratables, we get the tax rate. So taking all of this into account, when comparing last year to this year, you can see that we are not comparing apples to apples. In order to do so, we would need to look at each factor of the equation to see the impact. For example, if the increase in ratables was the same amount last year that it is this year, the increase would have been $129 instead of $24. That impact alone is $105. Likewise, if we had the same increase in ratables this year as last year, there would have been an increase of only $59 instead of $161. And additionally, if the full impact of the separate question had been taken into account last year instead of only half, $78 would have been added, and the combined tax increase would have been $184. So by leveling out the playing fields, you can make a better comparison of the two years. And I hope this helps with explaining why the tax rate is higher this year and what the impact of the ratables actually is. And that is the end of my presentation.
I'd like to open it up to the board. Does the board have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to know, under grants, it's less than 1 percent. Can you explain why we don't get some more money in grants and why it's so low?
For the grants, we typically, we get every year, we are basically allocating an amount for title funds and for IDEA funds. There's really not a whole lot of other grants out there. We do have a grant coordinator who would be the one who would try to reach out, try to find more grants, but that is what we typically would get every year.
I'd be delighted to provide you a little bit more detail. So we do, our Director of Human Resources is also in charge of grants, and it's something that we reallocated when the positions changed, because she had tremendous experience in her previous district. One of the sad situations, very similar to the amount of monies that we get allocated, is also we don't have a very high rate of free reduced lunch. So, and I'm not saying for all, but many of the grants, because anything I see, sometimes it's an advertisement, it's a company looking to make money, sometimes it really is a grant, I forward everything to her, and she goes through every single grant that she ever comes upon. The majority of them, we cannot, we will not be approved for. However, there are some things, although they may be a smaller amount within the budget, that you will see, and a lot of times, Dr. Lane will make the statement, that is grant-funded. So through professional development, through various different programs that we bring to our children, they may be grant-funded, but on a scale that's so minute, that when you look at a $150 million budget, the percentage is so low. But it doesn't mean that we're not getting some grants.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Rattner?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciated the details from the ratables, because I know that was definitely something that, you know, needed, you know, warranted additional explanation, because without knowing how it's calculated, it's hard to understand where it came from. So I really appreciate all of the efforts on that. And then I just had a couple of questions. I'll go very quickly. The first was, there were two line items that I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification on. So on, I believe it's the first page, under General Fund, it's Regular Programs and Instruction, and it says Other Purchased Services. And then Page 4, under General Administration, is also Other Purchased Services, as the line items for the budget.
Yeah, so under Other Purchased Services, under Instruction, that includes the iPad refresh payment, instructional equipment lease payment, trailers, instructional equipment repairs, technology, program license fees, and mileage reimbursements for teachers and Comcast fees. And under General Administration, Other Purchased Services, the bulk of that line is for insurance, errors and emissions, general liability, cybercrime, student accident, and also included is legal ads, travel, and mileage reimbursement for the superintendent and board members, Strauss S.M.A., and frontline for the absenteeism and subs.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just, I guess, two more questions. On the pie chart, there was something that was designated as fund balance, and if you could just elaborate a little bit on where that comes from, what that is.
So the fund, let me just get to the chart. So the fund balance, we have to include, of our total fund balance, anything over 2 percent of the general fund expenditures basically goes into, there's a calculation and there's some adjustments, but goes into excess surplus, which has to be included in the budget as a revenue source to be used against appropriations, and the remaining amount can stay as the general fund unassigned fund balance that can be used, you know, maybe in another year.
Okay, and then just the final question. I know I brought this up at finance, but for purposes of the hearing, I know that there were community members who wanted to, I guess, understand regarding Jamesburg tuition, why it had, in the budget, it was a flat tuition rate year-over-year, even though there were enrollment increases. So if you can just explain that for the people that are here who may not have seen the finance committee, that'd be great.
So the budgeted Jamesburg tuition is based on 275 students at a rate of $15,500. There was a time when Jamesburg was not able to pay their tuition, so there was an agreement made about 10 years ago, basically setting up a payment plan. So every year, there's a calculation made with the audited numbers to determine the actual amount of the tuition that occurred for the year, based on the actual enrollment. And the difference is, the budgeted, in the budgeted tuition and the actual tuition is applied against or to the outstanding debt, and once that debt is paid off, the annual adjustment would be billed or paid to Jamesburg for that budget year. So, yeah, so it's, there's always, you know, we have to, we budget for one amount based on an estimate, and then after the year-end, after we have audited numbers, we go back and look at what was the actual amount and whatever the difference is. Just like with our private school, private schools that we pay tuition to, two years after, there's always an adjustment. Either they owe us money or we owe them money, because they go and look at the calculation of the actual expenditures compared to what they actually charged us.
Thank you, and again, thank you to you and everybody for your hard work on the budget.
Thank you.
Miss Bora?
I also wanted to comment on the ratables. First, thank you for preparing the detailed appendix, and for community members who've had concerns with the tax impact, I encourage you to see Appendix A, where the budget information is on our website, which is what Laura was showing through. It's a very detailed presentation that explains exactly why it is $161. And last year, I want to remind everybody that we went out to a budget question, which means we went out to ask for, to go over 2 percent levy. So we asked for $2.7 million over the 2 percent levy, and that budget question passed, and yet the impact was only $24 on an average assessed home. And we were relieved, because we got lucky with the ratables being really high last year. But we're bearing the brunt of it this year, with the ratables are, you know, historically really low this year. We are not going over the levy, we are at 2 percent levy, and yet the impact is $161. It is not something that the Board of Education can control. Our responsibility is to just ensure that we stay within the 2 percent levy and not cut programs, and that has been the hard work that this board has put in and accomplished the goal with the budget that is being presented tonight. So it's the best we could do under the circumstances, where our state aid was a constant, only $33,000 more. We did not get any more money for the equalization aid, no matter how hard we tried. So we have to go to 2 percent levy to maintain our operating budget. So thank you so much.
Any other board members with any questions? Okay, then we're going to open it up to the public. We're now on our public forum for budget items only. If there are any members of the public wishing to come up for the public forum for the budget, you will have four minutes to speak. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
And to be clear, ladies and gentlemen, this is the budget hearing right now.
Good evening, Bob Valentine, Monroe Township. I just have a number of questions on the budget. Do the time, if you wouldn't mind, go through my questions and comments and let you respond at the end, if that's all right. It's basically coming from the view of the budget information you shared and the June 30th, 2024 audit. My first question or comment is, I'm interpreting the amount you have in fund balance as basically reflective of the operating deficits you might have otherwise had incurred, if you did not have that money to put into the pot, if you will, to make the numbers work for this year. I want to confirm that if my understanding about that is correct, and if it is, my other question would be, how much money is left potentially for you to apply to your future years to help cover any potential deficits coming forward? Because that's been an issue in the past in terms of deficits and managing those deficits. My next comment, the state contributes significant monies for benefits on behalf of the district that are reported in the annual audit, but they don't appear in the budget, and they're quite significant, they're millions of dollars. It does appear on the audit, but not in the budget. I'm curious as to why that is, and because it really understates the total employee benefit cost for the district, those amounts not being in the budget. There are business-type activities reported on the audit. At June 30th, those activities had a cash balance of over $1 million. There seems to be the Falcon Care and some other items. The extent that I see that we've been transferring money from those activities to help support the budget, I'm just wondering how sustainable that is as a source of money going forward. This is down to $1 million, and you're putting money in this, excuse me, this year. I noticed that it appears that we're really very heavily reliant on the tax rates to close, which would be a significant deficit in providing special education services. If you look at Schedule B, the special education costs alone are like $16 million, and the eight is $7 million. To me, that's the big headline in this budget. I know it's something you've been talking about, but I think in terms of the conversation you're trying to have and the strategies that you've been doing, that should be the billboard, not the ratables. This is the big, to me, when I look at it, it's a big issue, but you can comment, if I'm not reading it right, please set me straight. I know you talked about cost-saving opportunities and maybe some revenue enhancements. I would just suggest it would be to your benefit to have a list in the handout of what you did. You know, you talked about different things you did, but you're really not quantifying the way that it's easy to understand how much that that it's easy to understand how much that influenced the budget. And looking at your expenses, the regular instruction course seemed pretty stable when I look at 2024's actual spend compared to the budget, but I see some pretty sharp increases in all the other areas of instruction. So I'd just like to understand, you know, what's driving that? Is that a function of shifts in the enrollment, other factors? But it seems like there's some pretty significant increases in expenses from the actual spend in 2024 to what you're asking for this year. It's just there's some trends there that maybe you could talk to us about. I know you spoke, you did a lot of work. You spoke about the efficiencies you've tried to maintain, and how the county reviews it. I just have a clarifying question. When the county does their review, or you do your review, does that include a comparison of data on our district compared to comparable districts to see how we fare and compare on certain key metrics and scores, to see that, it's kind of like an outside check, if you will, as far as that we're comfortable that everything we're, we're doing, we, our perception of how things are really is, maybe the county does it. I don't know the process the county goes through, but I'm just curious if you could speak to that. And the last, the last 40 seconds I have, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't make some more progress on what we call transparency. A lot of the information was very similar in presentation and scope to last year's. And there's a lot of good information in that handout, but I think there's still opportunity. There's no summary P and L statement for readers to easily see what we're taking in, what we're spending, and what the net is, and what's, what other sources of contributions are coming in to make the budget work. The budget is close to the audit format, but this is still quite aligned. There's inconsistency in how things are grouped, segregated. The extent that that would all be aligned, it'd be so much easier to be able to understand and follow, you know, what you're doing as you develop the budget, and be able to make logical coherent assumptions about what's happening from year to year. There's no analytical data. And last thing, capital budgets are a capital budget. I don't, I've never seen a capital budget. Is that something that is presented, and the other activities on this budget for those things as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want, did you want to answer? Could you, okay. Well, first, let me ask, is there anybody else that has any questions, or that would like to speak at the podium?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. I just have a couple of questions. It was said, I believe, Ms. Allen, you said there, you budgeted for energy cost increase? Is that correct? So we're, we're budgeting for an energy cost increase, but the ESA program is an energy savings program that's supposed to be saving us money. I would like some clarification on that. And I know you had mentioned that the state of New Jersey gave adjustments for health benefits. And you did mention that the health benefit, it's connected to the state health benefits plan. And I would just like to point out that when the board a couple of years ago renegotiated the teachers' contracts, we went from Aetna to the state health benefit plan. So that decision that was ratified by the MTEA and the Board of Education has helped the district this year, because we are able to take those adjustments, and we're in that health state benefits plan, so we are able to take the adjustments accordingly. If we were in Aetna, we would have been way over the adjustment level for then the health state benefit plan. So that has helped us this year as well. And just a quick comment. I'm always for not making cuts to programs. I've always supported school budgets. I've never been, I've never been for cutting anything. I've never been for cutting staff. You could put it any way you want. This is the largest school tax increase in Monroe's history without a vote of taxpayers. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm saying that people sat here on this board, running, saying you were going to decrease our taxes, and you haven't. And you can't, because of the way that state of New Jersey runs, because we don't get our fair share of funding. But to sit here and attack previous boards and previous administrators, and the superintendent last year saying that she was not putting forth a budget that was fiscally responsible, was irresponsible of the board members, and those who ran, saying they were going to reduce our taxes. So I just want to point that out. You could blame the town, you could blame ratables. At the end of the day, you're putting forth a budget. You're in charge of that budget. And I'm not saying that I would want you to make cuts, but I'm just saying you put forth a budget, knowing what you were doing was right for kids, to not cut our programs. And if you could answer, how many more buses are we adding, and what is the cost for that? And also, what is the balance in our cafeteria fund? Those are a couple of the questions that I have. Because on top of the increase in taxes, it's, it's my understanding from watching Finance that you're also, for the second year in a row, increasing our lunch costs as well. So what is the current cafeteria fund balance?
Currently, it is just under $700,000.
Okay. And we don't have to pay the custodians out of that fund, correct?
We are not required to.
We're not required to.
But they're technically, they are, these are custodians that are working in the cafeteria.
Right, but we don't have to pay them. And we didn't, the only time we started doing that was when we illegally had too much money in the fund, and we had to spend that down. So the lawyer had told us that we should pay the custodians out of that fund. We weren't paying them previous to that, out of the fund. So when you're, when you're saying you've got to increase the lunch costs to pay for the custodians, that's not 100% accurate, because they shouldn't be being paid out of that fund to begin with.
They technically--
They can be, but they don't have to be.
It's an enterprise funding. Technically, you should be, you know, the cost, and then the, the cost should all be included, whatever costs to run that program. So that is, that's a legitimate cost to run that program.
Oh, absolutely. It's a legitimate cost, but it doesn't have to come out of the cafeteria fund.
If it's not being charged to the cafeteria, then it's being charged to the general fund.
Absolutely. And that's the way it used to be. And then if I could just get answers to my questions on the buses and--
Yeah. The buses, we are not including, I don't know if you meant, we're not buying any new buses this year, for the first time in a while, in many years, as far as I can remember. But we are, I think what you might be referring to is that we are, that we're trying to bring back buses in-house, so in-house routes as opposed to contracted routes.
Okay. And that's, that's accounted for in the budget?
Yes.
And if it's voted on tonight, we'll be going away from contracted routes?
Not all of them, but she's trying to get as many as she can back in-house.
Approximately, how many do you think that would be?
Do we, do you know that, do you have that? Don't quote me. We had 22, to my recollection, of out, of routes, not buses.
Thirty-six this year.
Twenty-two?
Thirty-six this year.
Last I heard, it was 22. We went down to 19. And now, I asked her, being new, which is a good thing, because you don't, you're so used to doing the same thing all the time, that sometimes you can't think out of the box, because that's all you know how to do when you do the routing. So I said, try and have an opportunity not to look at the current routing, but look at how you would do it differently. She thinks at a minimum, she's going to be going down, she's, we're looking to hire six new bus drivers, and her goal would be to be at a minimum of bringing back 15 or so routes. We might still have some routes outside, but her goal is to bring them back. The other way to save money is also, we currently go through ESC and J, and we pay a managerial fee. She has now looked to be able to go directly to the outsourced bus companies and eliminate that fee. So the cost will also go down.
I applaud the administration for listening to the community and for bringing the contracted routes back in-house. Thank you. That's for the safety of the children. And, and thank you for this budget, because I, I would have hated to see us make any cuts to any programs. And as I've said before, this is a testament to the fact that it is very difficult to stay under the 2% cap and not raise your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on the budget? Ask all of your questions, and then we'll answer them at the end.
Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. I do want to compliment that the, this budget is a little bit more comprehensive than it was in March, and I thank you for adjusting to that. But I think Mr. Valentine made a lot of great, had a lot of great questions, and I don't need to reiterate them. So is someone going to answer all of his questions? Because I think they're succinct. They're probably better than any of the questions I can answer. And I think it would be very important, especially since this is a hearing on this budget, that those questions are answered. So can I get an amen on that?
Yes, yes, we can.
Will, will they be answered? All of them?
Yes. He might have to ask them again, because there are quite a few.
Well, that, that was what I was afraid of, that he was put aside and dismissed, and then the questions were not going to be answered. And I think--
No, no.
Okay. That was my perspective, because I haven't seen anyone's questions not get answered, and then other people have come up. So if he can be invited back up and ask the questions again, because again, this is a budget hearing. This is a very important thing. It's $150, what, $6 million? I think those answers should be, you know, exposed to all of the community. Thank you.
Yes, you please come back up.
Just, you know, I didn't feel dismissed. I know you said you were going to get back to me.
Thank you, yes.
It's okay, though. And, but I understand, I still have a lot of questions. It's, this format is very constraining. It's not the way I want to do it either. So I appreciate the courtesy of letting me come back up.
Sure.
So I'll go through the questions again, and maybe we can talk about it. I started with the fund balance numbers, right? Those are numbers that you're taking from equity, putting into operations to help balance the books, if you will.
Yeah, yeah. And, and as I said, part of that, a portion of the fund balance has to be included. So it's not like we have to put it in there and balance it. We have, it has to be in there.
I have no question about that.
And then the other portion that we, that does not have to go into the budget, remains in fund balances, an unassigned, unreserved amount.
The reason for my question is, I was looking, it looked like in two, in the year ending, June 3, 24, we lost about $1,003. I'm interpreting the fact we need to put in fund balance. You had to do it, but I guess what I'm really trying, what I'm trying to get to is to understand, what is the pure operating gain or deficiency for the, in the budget, if you take out things like the fund balance you have to put in? If we looked at 2025, 26 revenues, 2025, 26 appropriations, what is that number? And then the reason I think it's important is, goes back to, not so much this year, but going forward, how, are we in a position where we have what I would call a structural deficit, where each year, you're going to have to erode your fund balance to help make up numbers? So that's why I think it's important, that's why I wanted to raise as a question.
Right. And I would have to say that that would be the amount, the $2.9 million is in, in there for excess surplus, is the amount that is, I don't want to say a plug, but it's the amount--
No, it's not a plug.
It's in there. So everything else is, you know, the actual revenues and appropriations.
And you may recall, one of the, they talked about looking forward a little bit beyond just next year. And that's why I'm raising this question, is I don't know how much more you have available to cover, if you will. I mean, I know you have to put it in, but the question would be, if you understand how much you're truly losing each year from current, current operations, what's left to put in?
And it really, it's, it's 2% that we have, it's the 2% that we are allowed to keep.
Right.
The excess goes in excess surplus.
So in theory, you could use that.
So we can only keep 2%. If we, if we could keep more, you know, if we can't, so--
Not that you want to, but you, in theory, you could.
Yeah, we can't.
You cannot.
We cannot keep more than 2% in the general fund, unreserved, unassigned fund balance.
So maybe I'll ask it a different way. Are you concerned, looking forward, about your ability to, to be able to balance the budget without having to tap into, to those, into the fund balance, if you will?
I can't say. We don't know how things will go, you know, with the economy, but for this year, we were able to do it.
Okay.
And unfortunately, you know, and like, again, you can't build that up.
I understand.
You're limited to what you're allowed to do.
Okay. I, second thing, as with the employee benefits, you know, the order the state puts in all those dollars.
So, yeah. So you're talking about the on behalf benefits you get.
Yes, correct.
And those show up in the audit report.
Right.
As both a revenue and an appropriation. So it's, it's a, it's a wash.
Yes.
Yeah. And those do not get in, they are not required to be in the budget. They do not get shown in the budget at all.
And the only reason I raised that as a question is because if you want to understand the true cost of providing benefits to everybody in the district, that number would seem to be a part of that number.
Right. And that's, yeah, that, you only see that in the audit report, and that comes out, like, in the fall.
Right.
You know, it'll come out this fall for the next, for this next year.
So that's something you don't have that number right now? You're having TV, put it if you wanted to.
No, it's not something that you're supposed to put in your budget, according to the guidelines.
Okay. Okay, that's interesting. Okay. I talked about the activities, the business activities, the, and, you know, how, how that ability, you're helping, that's helping to cover some of these shortfalls, and is that viable going forward?
Right. So what we have, like, you had mentioned the Falcon Karen ECE programs, and we are putting in $275,000 of anticipated profit. We don't, I don't expect to make a whole lot more than that in these funds. They haven't been making as much as they used to be, you know, since COVID. A lot of people don't, don't need these services. So I think that's, that's a conservative, safe number to put into the budget.
Yeah, I'm not challenging the number. I'm just looking at and saying, can it really be relied upon, going forward, years forward, to help cover the budget? That's what I'm a little, that was what I was a little concerned about. That's why I wanted to ask the question. And you might not be able to answer that tonight, but just something I wanted to make sure I brought out. It was just helping to make the numbers work, but there's not a whole, at least at the end of 2024, there wasn't, in June, there wasn't a whole lot of cash left in there.
Correct.
Okay. I told you about, I don't need to repeat that. Oh, and the, the trend in instruction costs versus special education, I wouldn't know if you had any thoughts about that, if anybody wanted to weigh in on that, but just, I was looking at the trends in spending, and those trends are going up, and I'm just, you know, just a concern, especially given what's, we're not getting out of the funding to begin with.
I'm happy to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
With regard to special ed funding for programs, as you're probably aware, under the IDEA, this is not the talk that I want to have in the, in the context of a budget, but under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the school district, when programming for special education, is not supposed to consider cost as it relates to students. So, you know, kind of, we have that to deal with, but also, we have increased costs in out-of-district placements statewide. And so they're really, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, because we are obligated to provide the services. And at the same time, we're not supposed to be thinking of the cost, which I don't know who operates that way.
Nobody wants to stay in business.
Right. But, but unfortunately, the position that the districts, and it's not just Monroe, but every district in New Jersey, has to operate that way. And so to the extent that programs and services can be brought in-house, I know that they're all being looked at, but to the extent that, you know, we can't bring them in-house, we're at the mercy of out-of-district placements.
I just think it's more about, you know, messaging and communicating around the budget. You know, ratables inevitably are going to go down and change. It's not, they're not going to be a straight bullet up, year after year after year. This is like a critical issue that's really impacting Finance. So I'm just really trying to encourage the board to maybe make, give more focus on that, especially in talking with the legislatures and strategy and all those kind of things. Okay?
Thank you.
I think that was everything. Thanks very much for your patience and answering my questions.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back up.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to come up to speak about the budget?
Vanessa Force, I live in Monroe Township. Okay, I, this has to do with the budget. There was an issue concerning the superintendent's contract. Does that affect--
This is, no, it's not about the budget.
But it does, because she was issued a raise.
Ma'am.
It's only about--
It's a question. It's just, I'm not, I'm asking if it's affected in the--
It's not, it has nothing to do with the budget.
It, that's, that was the question.
No.
Okay. So you're addressing there, I see that you, we've already talked about, I was going to bring up the, the busing as well, because with the accidents and everything, that increases our insurance and things like that. Okay, that was just a question. So there was no change?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak about the budget? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public forum on the budget hearing. Ms. Allen, you have a resolution to read?
Okay. Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the 2025-26 general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $146,649,000, and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of $125,159,489, and a special revenue fund balance budget in the amount of $1,439,795, and a debt service budget in the amount of $11,221,264, and a debt service local tax levy in the amount of $10,948,14, whereby the 2025-26 budget totals $159,310,059, and be it further resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education, includes in the budget the appropriation of surplus in the amount of $2,964,002. Be it further resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education includes in the budget the adjustment for increased costs of health benefits in the amount of $2,537,559. The additional funds will be used to pay for the additional increases in health benefit premiums.
The additional funds will be used to pay for the additional increases in health benefit premiums. Whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are, for 2025-26, the categorical special education aid is 7,193,085, and for 2025-26, the categorical security aid is 964,518, and for 2025-26, the categorical transportation aid is 4,155,96, and for 2025-26, the debt service aid is 280,450. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for 2025-26, the estimated extraordinary aid amount is 397,484. And whereas policy number 6471 and NJAC 6A:23A-7.3 provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for travel and expense reimbursement for the 2025-26 school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district tax travel maximum for the 2025-26 school year at the sum of 165,500, and be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded, and be it further resolved that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education authorize and approve a transfer of $275,000 of anticipated retained earnings from the proprietary Falcon Care Fund Early Childhood Enrichment Program as a revenue source in the 25-26 general fund budget, and whereas due to the priorities of student and staff safety, maintenance of current programs and staff, and capital improvement needs as set forth in the Board's Budget Philosophy Resolution, the Board is budgeting to maximum spending authority. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the superintendent of schools and the Business Administration Board Secretary file the required documents with the Executive County Superintendent.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or discussion from the board? Okay, can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes, and a special thank you to Ms. Allen and her team for doing a great job.
Thank you. Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And as has already been stated, thank you, Ms. Allen and your team, for all of your work on the budget.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the employment contract for a superintendent of schools covering the period from February 11, 2022 through June 30, 2022. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? If so, you have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby again, Monroe Township. I just want to clarify what this is. This isn't the superintendent contract, this is the acting superintendent contract, correct?
Yes, this is a contract, actually, that is from two or three years ago, that the Commissioner of Education, for one reason or another, which I'm not going to get into here, right, wrong, or otherwise, would like the Board to essentially approve an old contract from a number of years ago, which has no force in effect on anything that is happening in the district.
Correct. And I just want to, for transparency, there was only one acting superintendent contract, and that was dated November 2021.
Yeah, okay.
Correct? I mean, that is correct.
I believe so, I believe that's the contract that.
There were, there were no illegal contracts that the Board passed for Dr. Chanley. What, what was done was, it came out of a complaint filed with controversy and disputes through the Department of Education, and the complaint was not on any contract. It was claiming that the Board of Education did not hold a public hearing to extend contracts. There was no public hearing, I was the Board President, because we never extended her contract. The Board never voted in February or May to extend a contract. What we had to do as a Board, because Dr. Chanley did not have her standard certificate, because nobody does until they're a superintendent, she had to be entered into a mentoring program with the state of New Jersey. That required every three months, the Department of Education, to renew their approval of Dr. Chanley serving in that role. The Board of Education had to reach out to Kyle Anderson, the county superintendent, in February and again in May, and ask for their approval to have Dr. Chanley continue under that contract. Her contract in November 2021, signed by former Board President Michelle Arminio, was for a time period from November 2021 until such time the Board of Education appointed a permanent superintendent. That was in July of 2022. So I just want to make that clear, because the Board President's husband has several times said that the Board gave illegal contracts to Dr. Chanley. That is not true. The complaint was never about the contract. The complaint was about a public hearing that didn't take place. I testified last summer, two summers ago. They called me to testify in the case, and I tried to explain to the judge, correct, we did not have a public hearing, because we did not extend a contract. Others testified with erroneous and false information. The judge ruled that she believed we did give two contract extensions. There was no proof of that, there were no contracts that were extended. Again, there was one contract, November 2021, signed by the previous Board President, Michelle Arminio. This Board never had another acting contract. I don't know how this Board is voting tonight. The only person who sat on this Board during that time period was Mr. Tofano. I don't even know how you're going to take a vote on something dating back to 2022. And if you do abstain, which I would expect you would, because you weren't part of those negotiations, I would not see that as a vote of no confidence. It's already being said by people in the community, Mrs. Zeez, who puts it on her page all the time, that if the Board doesn't pass this tonight, it's a vote of no confidence. I wouldn't see it that way. This is a moot contract, it's a moot point, and honestly, it's a shame that when this decision came down, that this Board did not go back to the Commissioner and contest what was done. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing on the employment contract. Is there something we have to read? Is there a resolution we have to read? Or do we just look to motion?
My recollection from the Commissioner's decision is that the Board just needs to have the hearing, which it's now done, and take a vote. And to be clear, the Commissioner did not indicate in the decision that Board members should vote in the affirmative, the negative, or otherwise abstain. It's up to each Board member to vote how they want.
Okay, so is there a motion? Can, is there a motion to vote?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePain. Any discussion from the Board? Okay, then, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Abstain.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Abstain.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Abstain.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstain due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
Abstain.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Abstain.
Ms. Fabiano?
Abstain.
Motion does not pass. There were three yeses and seven abstains.
Yeah, again, as I said previously, this is a contract from a number of years ago. The effect of tonight's vote really has no force in effect. Does not affect Dr. Chanley's employment whatsoever. And so that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is our committee reports.
Madam President, can I make a comment?
Sure.
There's a lot of people waiting. Could we, as a Board, move that afterwards and do the public forum first? Because it's really.
So, yeah, so the committee reports, so the committee reports we aren't reading, they're.
I know, but there will be some discussion on the policy for the.
So, we can have that during the, during the.
No, the public forum discussion on the committee.
Yeah, no, we're not voting on that.
We're not, but that's when we talk about things, right?
Would it be possible then for us to discuss that during other board business?
We could, yeah.
Is that why we can still have that discussion?
Okay.
Yep, so we're going to move through the committee reports, the committee reports.
Sounds good, sounds good, because we will have the board business.
Yeah, we can put our committee, our committee reports are posted on the district website. They're here, at the link, along with the videos. So let's move along to the next item, which is our public forum for agenda items only. Any member of the public wishing to speak? You have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Hello, my name is Logan Stanley Zawacki. I'm from Monroe Township, New Jersey. I go to Woodland Elementary School, and I'm a fourth grader. I am speaking because I want Dr. Chetta to stay at Woodland. She solves problems and is a very kind person. When I'm at Woodland, I feel safe, because Dr. Chetta is the best person I know. I like going to school, because she is there for me, and everyone else too. We feel special, because we are recognized at her school. If you take Dr. Chetta away from us, we would be sad, because we love her as our principal, and she loves us too as her students. The right thing to do is to keep her at Woodland School. Thank you for listening.
Board of Ed, I am Leo Zawacki, and I live in Monroe Township. I am a third grader in Mill Lake School. I am moving up to Woodland next year, where Dr. Chetta will be my principal. Dr. Chetta is one of the most kind-hearted principals I've ever known. Her leadership is strong and powerful, never disappointing anyone. I am looking forward to so much with her. Dr. Chetta's school is filled with excitement and joy. My brother Logan comes home almost every day telling fantastic news about how Woodland is amazing with her. She puts hard work into all of her activities for her school, so I can't wait to see what she's planning next year for all of her new students. She treats everyone equally, students and teachers. Dr. Chetta has a goal to move forward, to always try her best and never look back. She puts a rainbow in everyone's cloud. If Dr. Chetta was not the principal, things can go very wrong. She is like a star of hope and luck. If she leaves, people will be unhappy and feel sorrow. They will not be focused and will learn less. Dr. Chetta is a warm heart. She deserves to be appreciated by anyone listening to this. She is a sparkle of hope for beginner students at her school. Don't take Dr. Chetta away from us. She is a hero for Woodland. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Brendan Johnson, and I am a student at Woodland Elementary. I am here today to ask you to please approve Dr. Chetta's contract for next year. Dr. Chetta is an amazing principal who cares deeply about all of us. She wants us to grow into well-educated, well-rounded kids. She organizes fun activities like outdoor picnics, where we learn about recycling, and she holds monthly assemblies that teach us important life lessons like perseverance. Last assembly helped us feel more confident about going into our math testing. Dr. Chetta is always friendly and kind. She even visits our classroom to make sure we are doing okay and staying on track. She knows every one of us by name. She has, always has a smile on her face, and she makes me feel safe in our school. I love Dr. Chetta and really hope she stays as our principal next year. Thank you for your time.
Hello, the Board of Educators. My name is Delash Nigley. I am in fourth grade at Woodland Elementary School. Dr. Chetta makes me feel safe and confident. She is there for my good days and bad days. When I'm feeling, feeling down, she tears me up by making me have a special bond with Dr. Chetta and feel so Chetta. And so Dr. Chetta stays at Woodland Elementary School. She is the best principal ever. She is so sweet and makes me happy, and she always greets us in the morning. That's why you should keep Dr. Chetta. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Landon Arden, and I'm a fifth grade student at Woodland Elementary School. Dr. Chetta has really made a big impact on me in my time at Woodland over the past two years. I will admit, I haven't always made the best decisions. And when I didn't make the right choice, instead of yelling at me, she talked out ways to fix my mistakes and how I should change the situation next time. Dr. Chetta has taken the time to plan fun events for all of our students at Woodland, like the school-wide outdoor picnics, extra recess, and the walking club, and our school-wide monthly growth awards. Every morning, Dr. Chetta is outside of Woodland greeting all of the students by name, getting us excited for school. Having a principal who listens to you and makes you feel important is why I love Dr. Chetta, and I would hate, hate for other students to miss out on having her as a principal. Please, Monroe School Board, renew Dr. Chetta's contract.
Point of order, please. Can I make a point of order?
Sure.
Point of order.
Oh, do you want to move the.
We're going to be here, I mean, I think it's absolutely wonderful that everyone's coming out to support Dr. Chetta.
Yes.
I mean, it's great, it's absolutely marvelous. And so, we're going to be here until maybe 1 o'clock in the morning. Is there any way we can just go to vote on it?
Yeah. We can't, we can't limit the public forum, though.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure. That's fine, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Katie Arnold, and I'm a fifth grader at Woodland Elementary. I'm here tonight because I want to talk about someone who has made a huge difference, it's a difference in my life and in my experience at Woodland School, Dr. Chetta. I was born with spina bifida, and I'm, and I am wheelchair dependent. And that makes things harder for me in some ways. But what really matters is how people treat me as an individual and how they make me feel. Dr. Chetta goes above and beyond and takes time to make me feel positive and treats me just like she treats all of the students at Woodland. I recently had scoliosis surgery that required me to be out of school for some time. After being home for a few weeks, I started to feel sad, and I was missing school and my friends. My mom reached out to the schools to see if we could come in for a surprise visit with my class. Dr. Chetta met us so excited to see me, and she made me feel so good about myself at the moment. She made me feel like I was truly missed in school, and that mattered. She took time out of her day to not only come with me to my class, but she also pushed me to my class. She stayed and watched my class, excited to see me, and then pushed me back. She expressed how happy she was for me and how great, and told me how great I looked after the surgery, and how she couldn't wait for me to come back to school. She's been there for me and comforted me when I was having a hard day, whether emotionally or physically. She has been one of the first to respond, to respond and be there when I have bus issues. She always made sure I am included in all school events. Dr. Chetta's caring, positive attitude, positive attitude is event, and in the way she is with all of us. She makes us feel safe and important. She encourages us and gives us the confidence to do better. She visits our classroom and is always interested in our work. And she truly listens to us, even, and even asks us for ways that would improve our school day. Because of Dr. Chetta's kindness and support, I learn to believe in myself more. I'm not afraid to ask questions in class, and I'm excited about my future in middle school. Dr. Chetta isn't just a principal to me. She's someone who's made, who has made a lasting impact on my confidence and my school experience. Even though I am graduating Woodland this year, I hope you all see how special she is, and I ask that you continue supporting her work to make Woodland the best place where all the future gets coming in. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alexis Steinhouser, and I'm a fifth grader at Woodland School.
Hello, my name's Alexis Steinhouser and I'm a fifth grader at Woodland School. Tonight, I want to talk about someone who is really important to us, to all of us at school, our principal, Dr. Chetta. A principal isn't just someone who runs a school. They are the heart and soul of it. Our principal is someone who helps us make our school a better place to learn, grow, and be our best selves. First, let me talk about how Dr. Chetta is always there for us. Whenever we have problems in class, need help with a school event, or just someone to talk to, Dr. Chetta is always willing to listen. She knows every student by name and she takes the time to make sure everyone feels safe and respected. We can all trust that Dr. Chetta has our backs no matter what. She visits us in class all the time. She spends lunch and recess with us. She learnt our favorite TikTok dances and laughs with us. She greets all the students in the morning and at the end of the school day. Dr. Chetta has always helped me with my anxiety and made me feel better. I am the Student Council Vice President and I owe a thank you to Dr. Chetta. She encouraged me and gave me the strength to write a speech and stand up in front of the whole school and speak. And tonight, even though I'm nervous, I'm willing to stand up here and speak about Dr. Chetta because I know she would stand up for me. Dr. Chetta makes the school a better place and goes above, beyond being a principal. She helps organize events, encourages kindness, or supports our teachers. In conclusion, Dr. Chetta isn't just our principal. She's a role model, a friend, and a consistent source of support. She makes Woodland School a better place where we feel safe, valued, and inspired every day. Thank you, Dr. Chetta, for everything you do for us. We are lucky to have you leading our school and we appreciate you more than words can say. I hope that the hard-working volunteers of the Board of Education will see how special Dr. Chetta is to the students, parents, and staff of Woodland School. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chloe and I'm in the fifth grade at Woodland Elementary School. Based on the torture my orthodontist is putting me through, I will be speaking slowly. I'm here tonight to represent all my classmates and students in the entire school. Dr. Chetta is more than just a principal. She is a friend to everyone in the school. She always has time to listen to our problems, big or small. Dr. Chetta is caring, understanding, and always ready to help. My classmates and I all feel safe and happy under her leadership. I had an opportunity to read a book with Dr. Chetta that helped build a very strong connection between us. Last March, I competed in a school-wide Kahoot. I took first place. Dr. Chetta was my biggest fan at the moment, which I'll never forget. She knows how to build relationships beyond their day-to-day academics. Dr. Chetta is a principal with a heart of gold and dedicates her life to nurturing the growth of our students in Woodland School. Please keep Dr. Chetta as our principal as her leadership makes a real difference in our daily lives. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. John Zawacki, Monroe Township. My youngest wanted to come and support. She's not speaking, so she's just with me. So thank you for your time this evening and for providing the opportunity to speak. I'm here not to rehash the past, but to highlight the real measurable impact of a leader who deserves to remain at Woodland Elementary, Dr. Chetta. Let's talk about the results. Under Dr. Chetta's leadership, Woodland Elementary has seen consistent growth in key academic areas since her appointment. Recent MAP Growth data reveals that the school consistently performs well above national norms with a median achievement percentile of 62% in 2025. Additionally, our students showed growth in ELA and mathematics with seven to 11 average growth points from fall '24 to spring '25. These high achievement levels are matched by meaningful gains in equity. The percentage of students in the lowest achievement band dropped significantly from 11% to just 7%, a clear indicator of the school's success in closing gaps. NJSLA scores in both mathematics and ELA show a large majority of our students meet or exceed grade-level expectations. Disciplinary incidents have been reduced by at least 7% each year, showing a clear connection between her leadership and a safe, respectful school climate. Principal Observation Scores for Dr. Chetta have all been effective or highly effective on the Marzano Rubric, our district's evaluation model. This didn't happen by accident. It happened because Dr. Chetta leads with vision, consistency, and an unwavering focus for what's best for our kids. The environment at Woodland reflects this. Staff morale is high, parent engagement has increased. In fact, parent-teacher participation during her tenure has gone up significantly. Over 72% of families attending conferences this past fall. She doesn't just talk about values, she lives them. She is visible, she listens, she holds everyone, including herself, to high standards and the results are undeniable. Rehiring Dr. Chetta isn't just the logical choice, it's the right one for continuity, for progress, and for the emotional and academic well-being of the children and your care. This community is not asking you to take a chance. We are asking you to recognize proven success. We're asking you to vote yes because Dr. Chetta has already shown us what's possible. Vote yes because the data supports it. Vote yes because our children deserve consistency and excellence. And vote yes because as board members, you have the power to affirm a leader who has done everything right here in Monroe Township. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tricia Brady. I live in Monroe Township. I am reading this letter on behalf of a non-tenured teacher who wished to have their words heard tonight in support of Dr. Chetta. Dear Board Members and Decision-Making Team, I am writing to express my unwavering support for Dr. Orsolina Chetta's continued tenure as principal of Woodland Elementary School. As a seasoned educator with extensive experience across multiple schools and under various principles, I can unequivocally state that working under Dr. Chetta's leadership has been the most fulfilling and impactful experience of my career. Her exceptional leadership, characterized by professionalism, empathy, and vision, has transformed Woodland Elementary into an exemplary institution and I respectfully urge you to retain her in her role. Dr. Chetta possesses an extraordinary ability to recognize and nurture talent, as evidenced by her thoughtful hiring decisions. I am deeply grateful to be among the educators she has selected as this opportunity has profoundly enriched my professional and personal life. Under her guidance, my confidence in teaching skills have grown significantly. Thanks to her unwavering support and commitment to fostering a collaborative environment, Dr. Chetta actively encourages input from staff, listens attentively, and integrates diverse perspectives to enhance our school's mission. Beyond her professionalism, Dr. Chetta has cultivated a safe, inclusive, and supportive atmosphere for both staff and students. She is approachable, compassionate, and serves as a trusted confidant, ensuring that everyone feels valued and heard. Her ability to connect with students, whether through engaging with them at their level or serving as an inspiring role model, sets her apart as a leader. Likewise, her open-door policy empowers teachers to seek guidance and grow professionally. The prospect of losing Dr. Chetta as our principal is deeply concerning to the Woodland Elementary community. Her departure would represent a significant loss for our staff, students, and the broader district as her contributions have elevated morale, strengthened our school's culture, and positively impacted our community. Dr. Chetta's leadership exceeds all expectations and her absence would have a profound negative effect on our school's trajectory. I respectfully implore the Board to consider the overwhelming positive impact of retaining Dr. Orsolina Chetta as principal of Woodland Elementary School. Her proven track record and dedication to excellence makes her an indispensable asset to our district. I trust that you will make the decision guided by precedent, common sense, and the best interests of our school community. Thank you for your time and careful consideration. Sincerely, Teacher, Woodland Elementary School.
Hello, everybody. I'm Michelle Costa. I live at 13 Evergreen Terrace, Monroe Township, New Jersey, and I am a teacher at Woodland School. This is Ken. It is with great enthusiasm that I stand here before all of you in support of Dr. Orsolina Chetta. She celebrates not only our enrichment students, but also champions our neurodiverse population with equal dedication. I have been a special education teacher in Monroe since 2003, a parent of a child who attended Woodland School under Dr. Chetta's incumbency. I'd be remiss, but I did not add a personal touch about my journey here and how I view our work in Monroe. I have a daughter who has autism spectrum disorder, who flourished through our schools. She's one of my greatest teachers because she has helped me understand not only the children I teach, but you, you all as parents, and I believe we all share the same goals. I believe that we all want what's best for our children, all of us. As a result, Dr. Chetta's work at Woodland resonates deep with me because she understands the power of education for all children, all children. During her time at Woodland, Dr. Chetta has also led transformative initiatives that reflect her deep commitment to student and staff well-being. Through the Wellness Committee, students learn strategies for emotional regulation and self-care. Dr. Chetta also provided her staff with bath bombs and smoothies and apples to show her appreciation for us. She also led our Neurodiversity Committee where students explored brain function and collaborated on a mural with the high school. Additionally, she helped launch Club Code, a computer science robotics program, and she chairs the Abbott Committee, which focuses on character education and goal-setting. Each month, our school, we focus on a core value like perseverance or friendship or honesty, and Dr. Chetta gets up and personally speaks and teaches the children what these core values mean, what it means to be a good human. And then the kids go back and they set their goals. And then this is my favorite part, okay? So, my favorite part is the students who engage in this. She picks two students per class and then she rewards them with her time and she gives them art room and STEM room and plays outside with them. I mean, that's a big deal. Furthermore, Dr. Chetta's leadership in special ed has been equally impressive. Now, I must tell you a story, one of many, but this one stands out for me personally. One of our students was having a difficult moment transitioning from home to school, something we might call behaviorism, as an extinction burst or a meltdown. As I approached, I noticed a child was sitting in the hallway, arms crossed, head down, refused to get up from the floor. Dr. Chetta was right there, speaking to the student with such kindness and patience. I walked over and asked, can I help? She smiled and said, of course. After some visual prompts were provided, we were able to bring the child back to engage in non-preferred activities. Once the student was able to self-regulate through the strategies, the child was given a reinforcer by Dr. Chetta. And Dr. Chetta was so cute. She was holding it and the child was playful with Dr. Chetta, right? And she goes, I eat too, and Dr. Chetta was so great with her. And we both sat on the floor across from one another and I glanced up at Lena and I smiled to myself and that tender moment, my heart was filled, my eyes teared up, and I was just so proud. I reflected back on the beginning of my career and how people in society were afraid of people with autism. I was reminded how far we've come as humans. It hit me again, yet another thought. In my career, I was able to witness a principal sitting on the ground playing with a student who couldn't speak with just ease. She didn't mind and she, it was beautiful. The timer went off and as we left, Dr. Chetta told me how blessed she was to work with these youngsters. In that glimpse of time, it was unequivocally noted by me that Dr. Chetta would do anything to improve the lives of her students. I'm almost done. Additionally, I must share with you a secret. Dr. Chetta comes into all of our classrooms across settings and grade levels all of the time. She knows all of my students by name and can tell you their stories. She smiles and dances through the room, talking to the children, what they did over the weekend. She's always visible in a completely non-threatening way, but more curious and excited about the children and how she can support us as teachers. On a day-to-day basis, if you came to our building, Dr. Chetta would be waving to parents at bus duty, okay? She would be walking with a student who has no friends outside on the playground, no friends, but Dr. Chetta was there for that student, doing penny wars where our PTO president, okay? Or coming up with the next big idea to make Woodland great. From what I've observed, Dr. Chetta treats all children with dignity. So, in final analysis, Dr. Chetta demonstrates what it means to be inclusive, informed, and deeply compassionate educational leader. She has built something sacred at Woodland, a place where every student, regardless of their ability, background, need, feels safe, seen, and valued. And I give Dr. Chetta my highest and most heartfelt recommendation for principalship to continue to shape our schools. Her leadership is a gift to our district, our families, and to the children who will one day look back and say to themselves, I became who I am because someone like Dr. Chetta was worthy of seeing me. Thank you so much.
Hi, Karen Breski, ESL teacher for Brookside and Woodland Schools. I'm here to express my strong support for Dr. Chetta. At the last board meeting, I saw comments suggesting that she lacked community support and I'm here, along with the others, to respectfully counter that narrative. As a traveling teacher in this district, I've had the privilege of working with many administrators. I can say with confidence that Dr. Chetta stands out for her visible leadership, collaborative spirit, and tireless dedication to staff and students. She is present, hands-on, and always working to support our school community. Dr. Chetta has fostered a culture of academic excellence and continuous improvement. She promotes a growth mindset that's reflected not just in our attitudes, but in our student outcomes. I encourage the Board to review the success we've had under her leadership. Our progress is real and measurable and much of that is thanks to the collaboration built through Dr. Chetta's leadership. I appreciate that this process tonight exists to ensure accountability, but I urge you to reflect on whether in this case, the process is aligned with that goal. Dr. Chetta exemplifies the qualities we should be championing in our leaders: integrity, collaboration, and results. In researching the role of school boards, its state school boards are responsible for hiring and evaluating the superintendent while the superintendent and their team manage daily operations. Board members are expected to act on the superintendent's recommendations. In this case, Dr. Chetta has been recommended for renewal by the superintendent and her performance has been consistently strong with no significant concerns or disciplinary issues during her tenure. I understand that board decisions carry weight and complexity, but I respectfully ask that tonight's vote reflect the data, the superintendent's recommendation, and the voice of the community and that all outside gossip and allegations from previous work be excluded as they do not reflect Dr. Chetta's job performance in Monroe, nor can we prove- nor can we prove those allegations from random members of the community. At this time, I'm going to ask some board members some hypothetical questions and I do not expect answers, just some honest reflection. Mr. Payne, I've had the privilege of attending classes with one of your children. I know your family values education and leadership. If your child were in Dr. Chetta's position with a strong recommendation from a superintendent and no performance-based reason for termination and strong support from staff and community, how would you feel if a board member abstained or voted no and cost them their job? Mr. Piro, we've worked together before. I have respect for you and I know you were in a similar position not too long ago and your past job performance was also shared to social media without insight. You most of all should understand what it feels like to be unfairly judged. However, I ask you to pause tonight and think about your own child in the education field. How would you feel if their future were decided without a clear understanding of their performance or potential? Mr. Zeichner, I understand you have a background in administration and that you value data and informed decision-making. With your standards for leadership and accountability, how do you reconcile abstaining or voting no for Dr. Chetta after reviewing the data and measurable progress as well as listening to all the staff and community's support? To Ms. Fabiano, you've shown professionalism and composure in a challenging environment. As a fellow educator, how would you feel if someone told you that despite a strong recommendation from a superintendent, outstanding evaluation- recommendation from a superintendent, outstanding evaluations, and strong results, your job was at risk with no clear justification? I don't believe any of you would sit quietly while such an injustice was taking place against you or your family members. In closing, I often lean on my faith to guide me daily, and recently, this message was delivered in my morning devotional. So, I'll leave you with a Bible verse that reminds us of the power and responsibility of our words and decisions here tonight. A good person's mouth is a clear fountain of wisdom; a foul mouth is a stagnant swamp. The speech of a good person clears the air; the words of the wicked pollute it. Dr. Chetta has made a profound impact on our school. I trust that tonight you will clear the air with clear wisdom and not muddy the swamp. I trust, I trust that you will lead with fairness and in the best interests of our students, and that you will not lose a leader of Dr. Chetta's caliber. And I must say, my husband asked me to say, everything's better with Chetta.
Iggy Rasmussen, Woodland School, and also a Monroe Township resident. I am here to respectfully and wholeheartedly request the renewal of Dr. Chetta's contract. In my time working under her leadership, I have witnessed firsthand the dedication, integrity, and vision she brings to our school community. Dr. Chetta leads not only with skill, but with heart, and that combination has made a real and lasting impact on both students and staff. Since she has assumed the role, there have been academic improvements, community partnerships have strengthened, and there has been a noticeable boost in morale among staff. These are not just statistics. They represent lives changed, confidence restored, and a culture that encourages growth. Dr. Chetta provides stability, consistency, and forward-thinking leadership, and we need to continue building on this momentum. In my 15 years at Woodland School, I have been privileged to work with outstanding administrators, and I feel incredibly fortunate to be part of a team guided by Dr. Chetta. She is committed to excellence and the well-being of our school. I urge you to consider what her continued leadership means, not just for those of us who work with her daily, but for the students and families who rely on her strength of our school. Thank you.
Tricia Rutherford, teacher at Woodland School. Good evening. My name is Tricia Rutherford, and for nearly two decades, I've had the privilege of serving as a teacher in Monroe Township. My journey began at Woodland School, where I've witnessed the leadership of four principals and nearly all the vice principals who now guide our other elementary schools. With that experience, I can say without hesitation that Dr. Chetta is one of the most exceptional administrators I have ever had the privilege to work with. Dr. Chetta is not only a remarkable leader, but also a deeply compassionate individual. Her commitment to the success of every staff member in our building is evident in all that she does. She understands that student achievement is directly tied to school morale, and she actively fosters an environment built on support, respect, and motivation. Whether it's asking us how our weekend was or planning something silly and fun at a faculty meeting, Dr. Chetta takes the time to connect with her staff and offer encouragement when it's needed most. As a member of both the school Goals Committee and the SEL team, I've seen firsthand how Dr. Chetta actively participates in our discussions and planning. She truly listens to our ideas and consistently concludes our meetings by asking how she can support us. Under Dr. Chetta's leadership, our school community has thrived. She sets high, yet attainable, expectations and inspires both students and staff to reach them. When we succeed, she celebrates us. When we fall short, she collaborates with us to find solutions, always as a teammate, never from a distance. The data we have collected from map testing over the course of Dr. Chetta's tenure clearly demonstrates Woodland School's exceptional progress. This is not a coincidence. It is a direct result of Dr. Chetta's clear vision and her ability to motivate the staff in our building to strive for greatness. In addition, for the past two years, Dr. Chetta has spearheaded a school-wide theme focused on growth mindset, a first for Woodland School. We hold engaging monthly assemblies to energize our students about upcoming character traits and rewards, celebrating our growth winners with special recognition. You will find Dr. Chetta right alongside the students participating in our school-wide dance parties, extra recess, or lunch with staff members. But what truly distinguishes Dr. Chetta is her genuine connection with our students. She understands their individual challenges, recognizes their unique strengths, and embraces their diverse personalities. She knows every single student in our building by name. You can find her greeting them on the buses in the morning or saying goodbye in the afternoon. She joins them during recess and regularly visits our classrooms to see what they're learning and engage in conversation. This connection is truly reciprocal. The students don't just know her name, they know her. They know her interests, they know she cares deeply, and they know she's their biggest cheerleader every single day. And when they make mistakes, as children naturally do, she guides them with patience and purpose, helping them learn, grow, and take responsibility for their actions. Just last week, for Principal Appreciation Day, my class wrote letters to Dr. Chetta highlighting her impact. We've all read these generic letters before: you're the best, you're so nice, et cetera, et cetera. These letters were different. They genuinely expressed gratitude for making Woodland an amazing place to be each day. I have a few of those heartfelt letters with me today to briefly share. Dear Dr. Chetta, thank you for being a great principal. I like the way you are so nice, positive, caring, and you have amazing ideas. Thank you. Dear Dr. Chetta, you are the best principal out there because you always do the right thing. You always boost our confidence during hard times. Dear Dr. Chetta, you are one of the nicest, most sweetest people I have ever met, the best principal ever. You're always in a good mood, and I love all of your outfits. I'm almost done. In closing, I respectfully urge you to reconsider your decision and reappoint Dr. Chetta as principal of Woodland School. This decision impacts not only the 60-plus dedicated staff members who come to work inspired by her leadership, but more importantly, over 200 children who depend on Woodland as a safe, nurturing, and empowering place to learn and grow each day. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Newcombe, and I'm the school counselor at Woodland Elementary School. It is an honor to speak in support of someone who represents the heart of our school community, Dr. Ursalina Chetta, principal of Woodland. She exemplifies what it means to be a leader in education. She provides both physical and emotional safety for our students, a foundation without which meaningful learning cannot occur. Her steady presence and thoughtful approach create an environment where children feel seen, supported, and secure. She provides consistency and collaboration among staff. Whether it's in daily interactions or challenging moments, her ability to listen and respond with care strengthens this trust that is so vital in our school. Dr. Chetta is also deeply responsive to parents. Her openness and respect for their voices build unity between home and school, reminding us that we are all working together toward the same goal: our children's well-being and success. She greets our students by name, and she knows them, not just their academic records, but who they are. As a disciplinarian, she is firm but fair, setting clear expectations while maintaining deep compassion. Her leadership allows me, as a school counselor, to do my work more effectively. We complement each other in a way that brings order, stability, and care to our students' lives, resulting in the availability for them to learn. Most of all, Dr. Chetta is a caring presence at Woodland School. She leads with both strength and heart, and for that, we are truly fortunate. Thank you.
Doug Dale, Monroe Township. I'm here tonight to support Dr. Lena Chetta, Woodland School principal, and I asked you all to vote and renew her contract and follow the recommendation of the superintendent. The last time I was here, I spoke about the many reasons why Dr. Chetta is worthy of continuing to be our principal. After listening to many people who will speak to her character and leadership, and who have, I hope you understand that what you have heard about Dr. Chetta from the rumor mill or the handful of misinformed Facebook posters is untrue. I also ask that each of your vote is your own and not based on influence. When it comes to district personnel, as you should know, the New Jersey School Boards Association guidelines say that the school board's function is not to control the district's day-to-day business. Only the superintendent is accountable to the board. All other staff and members are accountable to the superintendent. The association states, "The board can appoint, transfer, or remove employees only upon the recommendation of the superintendent." Dr. Chetta is listed on tonight's agenda as being recommended for renewal. But by voting against the recommendation, you're not only undermining the board policies of the evaluation process, but undeniably, you're writing your own rules and inserting the board where it shouldn't be in matters of personnel. This language comes from Section 18A 27-4.1, Number 1A of the Administration Code, which are laws of the state regarding the Board of Education's role in personnel actions. So, voting against the renewal is also illegal. Equally as important, the law states that the board shall not withhold its approval for arbitrary or capricious reasons. Every New Jersey school board, including this one, follows Robert Rules of Order, the guide to parliamentary procedure to ensure that the business at the meetings is fair and efficient, it stays on track, that records are kept about motions and voting, and that allows everyone to have a voice. Motions and voting must follow strict order to be in the right place on the agenda and to be stated in the right way to ensure that the voting members understand the motion and decisions are made correctly. The vote in question here with Dr. Chetta is not only illegal in terms of New Jersey state law, but it also doesn't follow procedure, because the board cannot call a vote or vote for a non-renewal on its own. What it does do is sets a bad practice for this and future boards to feel that they can arbitrarily single out employees against the superintendent's recommendation for any reason or no reason at all, and fire them. That's not how it works. When it comes to voting, the use of abstaining from a vote can be used for two main reasons. You should abstain if you don't have enough information on the vote, of which you can either ask the table or postpone the vote to another time so abstaining members can get the information needed to make an educated vote, or you can use the debate discussion part of the motion to ask questions on the vote, to hold the vote at that time. The other reason to abstain is because of conflict of interest where the member should personally benefit from the vote. Having a child who goes to the school or works at the school in question is not a conflict of interest here. By removing yourselves from the vote, it limits the number of eligible votes and changes the outcome dramatically. This is Fabiano, respectfully. As chair of the board, you have the responsibility to consider two points that will have a lasting impact on this district either way. You can let this illegal and unprecedented action continue, which will surely open up the district to multiple lawsuits now and in the future, to be paid for by the taxpayers, me, which is what you all got on the board to stop from happening. Or you can perform the duty of the chair by following Robert's Rules, the guidelines of the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the New Jersey statutory laws, and advise the members of the board to vote accordingly, following the recommendations of the superintendent, because a vote against is illegal and absolutely out of order.
Eric Marazin, Monroe Township. Currently, I have two second graders that are in Mill Lake, and I own a local school. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, today I stand before you to advocate for the reappointment of Dr. Chetta as principal at Woodland Elementary. It is imperative that we prioritize our children's education to ensure strong leadership in our schools. First, I understand that some of you may hope this issue will simply fade away, but let me assure you, ignoring it will not serve our students' best interests. It appears that, for some, this has become a power trip rather than a commitment to our students' education. Abstaining from a vote, as some of you did, is a cowardly avoidance of your responsibilities as board members. If you believe in what is best for our children, you must be willing to make tough decisions. Under Dr. Chetta's leadership, we have seen significant improvements in test scores. This is not just a statistic. It reflects the hard work and dedication she has instilled in both students and staff. Yet, it seems that some board members are more interested in sending a message to the superintendent rather than focusing on what truly matters, the well-being and education of our children. This disregard for Dr. Chetta's contributions, and quite frankly, her life, is troubling. Dr. Chetta has received impeccable evaluations throughout her tenure. If we dismiss her now, we risk sending a message that this district is not a supportive environment for dedicated leaders like Dr. Chetta. Let's not forget that any future principal will also be recommended by the superintendent. So, what message are we sending if we do not back Dr. Chetta now? Pete, Charlie, Gail, Katie, and Carmen, I trust you will not make the same abstentions during this next vote. As we saw last meeting, there can be last-minute changes of hearts when it came to Mrs. Garcia, who was also supposed to be wrongfully terminated. Hopefully, with the volume of outreach from the community and stakeholders, you will change your mind and do the right thing for the students of this district. We must unite in our commitment to our students and stand behind the leadership that has proven over and over again effective. I urge you to reconsider and reappoint Dr. Chetta, not just for her sake, but for the sake of every child in Monroe Township. Let's do what is right for the students in our community. Thank you.
My name is Iris Glassberg, and I am proud to be a substitute teacher in the Monroe Township School District. I'm also a resident of beautiful Monroe Township. Over the last two years, I have worked in Woodland Elementary School many times. Everybody knows me there, and I always feel welcome. I have also had the privilege of meeting Dr. Ursalina Chetta. I have witnessed firsthand some of her interactions with staff and students. She is a true professional and respected by all. I have worked in many schools in numerous districts. It's an honor to tell you that Dr. Chetta is by far the most dedicated principal that I ever met. Woodland Elementary School wouldn't be the wonderful school that it is without her in charge. Why is Woodland so wonderful? Woodland is a small school, and everybody knows one another. It's cozy, and thanks to Dr. Chetta, we all feel like it's our home away from home. Dr. Chetta's leadership fosters an environment where everybody is treated with respect, kindness, and a feeling of camaraderie. Furthermore, Dr. Chetta makes Woodland a place that's conducive to children learning and feeling good about their accomplishments so that they can reach their full potential. Thank you, Dr. Chetta, for making such a positive impact on everybody's life.
Good evening. I'm Nadia Golubowska. I am the mother of autistic son. And my son has a problem transitioning in the beginning of the school year every year, so it just will be heartbreaking to let her go for my son and for me. After all that work she done, becoming his best friend, and every single day, I'm witnessing her to open the door, my stuck door in my car, to let my child go to school, to say hello, how are you? And the same thing when he goes home. She's always there. If I'm late, she's with him until I'm calm. And anything happens in school, she's calling me right away and we chatting and we solving the problem. And only person with the biggest heart and tons of energy can do this. Sometimes I envy her, how she can do this. So, if you, if she will go, it will be really, really heartbreaking for many people.
Good evening. Christina Zawaki, Monroe Township. First, thank you so much for letting us all speak. I know it is a very long evening, and I know you're all probably very uncomfortable, but thank you very much for listening to us. Second, I am so proud of all those kids. How to say it? My mom and teacher heart are like bursting. I'm so proud of them all. It was a beautiful thing to see. Everyone was smiling, and that was really nice to see as well. That being said, I know that it is fair to say that sometimes people enter a situation with their minds made up on certain topics because of the feelings of a few. Today and always, I ask that you not do that. I'm asking that you please keep an open mind, listen to what all of the staff members, parents, and students that are here tonight had to say. parents, and students that are here tonight had to say and have to say because that line is still pretty lengthy, and then please make the right decision for Woodland School. There is far too much at stake to ignore the voices of the community. Dr. Chetta is not just a name on a contract. She is the heart of Woodland Elementary, as we've heard many say. Her leadership has brought stability, care, and high standards, and the school thrives because of her presence. Students are excelling. The MAP scores prove this. Teachers feel supported. Faculty meetings, daily interactions, and the conversations this evening prove this. Parents trust the building that their children walk into every morning, and thank you because we just heard a parent prove this. So why are we here? Why is this even a question? When someone does their job well, when they exceed expectations, and when they create an environment where children feel seen, safe, and inspired, why would we consider removing them? As I stated in the last meeting, numbers don't lie, and I have no doubt that you've seen and reviewed the data of proof. You've seen the evaluation, all fours and above. You've seen the outpouring of support. What more is needed? Let's stop for a second and think about the message that this sends to the staff, many of whom are here, who give everything that they have to this district. Removing Dr. Chetta, despite overwhelming support and a proven record of excellence, would not only be unjust, it would be deeply demoralizing. It tells our educators that no matter how hard they work or how much they accomplish, their futures here are expendable. It sends a message to our children, the children who have had the grit and the gumption to push past genuine anxiety out of love and respect for Dr. Chetta, children who took the time to write their own little speeches in order to speak in front of you this evening. It tells those children that leadership doesn't have to be earned and it can just be taken away. We can't let our educators feel like they're expendable and we really should not let our children think that hard work and leadership are fleeting. You have a choice to make, and with all due respect, the right one is quite obvious. Vote yes. Actually vote to keep Dr. Chetta because an abstention strips away a potential yes, leaving contracts hanging in the balance. Make no mistake, abstaining isn't neutrality. It's a conveniently quiet way of saying no. Remember the oath that you took to make meaningful decisions for this community, and unless you have a genuine conflict of interest, one that is formally verified by legal counsel, abstaining is truly unacceptable. Vote yes for the children who thrive under her leadership and guidance. Vote yes for the teachers who rely on her. Vote yes for the hundreds of people who you've seen in the petition who made their voices heard. Vote yes because leadership like Dr. Chetta's is rare. Vote yes because I promise you, when you do vote yes, the community will not forget that you listened to what's in our hearts. Thank you.
My name is Angela Soniglia. My daughter is in fourth grade at Woodland Elementary School. I must say that this is the first year that I noticed my daughter was more than just a student and statistic. This year, she was definitely known by name and welcomed with open arms, much love, and support by Dr. Chetta. We met Dr. Chetta before the school year had started with the Ready to Rise program for students who were behind. Before this year, I struggled for years with Delilah's academic ability in Mill Lake Elementary School. I was always concerned that she was behind, but was always told that there was nothing to be concerned about. So instantly, I felt like I was being a crazy paranoid parent and that this was normal. Well, until the beginning of August 2024, when I received a letter inviting Delilah the Ready to Rise program, which started a couple weeks before the school year started, we dropped our children off. And Dr. Chetta introduced herself to each and every one of us, parents and students, and explained exactly what the program was about and what the students were going to be doing. She explained that this program was to help students to strive to be better and give them the resources to be more successful with teachers, games, programs on the computer. Since day one, Dr. Chetta made me feel like my daughter and my crazy thoughts were valued. Since Delilah has started Woodland Elementary School, she continues to be in the Title I program where she gets the extra help she needs for math and ELA. Delilah has been able to successfully do well in math and doesn't go for the extra support anymore. Since the beginning of the year, Delilah has been succeeding and improving her scores in math, which she has brought up her score seven percent from the fall to now in math. And with ELA, she has brought it up from brought up four percent since the beginning of the year. Without these programs, my child would still be struggling. I was truly devastated that the Board of Education did not reinstate Dr. Chetta's contract. Dr. Chetta is a very valuable woman to our children's education. She welcomes every student in the morning with the biggest smile by greeting them outside and get dropped off and picked up, rain or shine, freeze and weather, sweltering hot days. I love how Dr. Chetta knows each student by their name and acknowledges each one of them. Also, this is the first year in a few years that I felt that my child mattered, was valued, and was heard. For a few years now, my daughter has been bullied for her red hair, freckles, and sensitivity. If she ever tried to tell someone, she was told to not tell and was frowned upon. She felt that even she felt that she wasn't even allowed to have hurt feelings and just to let it go. This year, Delilah had the same thing happening and stayed silent because she was so accustomed to being told to let it go and that just it didn't matter. Dr. Chetta had gotten ahold of a note that was supposed to be given to Delilah from another student that was making fun of her and stating that no one liked her. Dr. Chetta spoke to the students and let Delilah's feelings be heard and told the students that bullying would not be tolerated. Afterwards, Dr. Chetta called and informed me, which I had no idea which was this was being done, and it made me feel even better that someone like Dr. Chetta was there to console my daughter and make her feel safe. With Dr. Chetta, Woodland Elementary School is a safe haven for both students and parents. I personally had some issues with Delilah at home and reached out to Dr. Chetta for some advice. At this point, Delilah is still very close and feels comfortable enough to express herself to Dr. Chetta. She spoke to Delilah and gave her some guidance and continues to check in with both of us. Dr. Chetta gives off good vibes, great support, and is all about being a part of that village and raising our children. Because of Dr. Chetta, my daughter Delilah loves going to school and is more confident. Dr. Chetta is one of a kind. She is patient, selfless, considerate, gentle, loving, and so adorable. Not considering not considering her for the contract would be extremely detrimental for my daughter Delilah, myself, and many other students and parents as well. Dr. Chetta is the mama bear we all need for our children when we are not there. She is the fight we need for our kids to strive. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I am Lauren and I'm from Monroe Township. Lauren Jenta, excuse me. Good evening, Board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you as both parent and a proud member of the Woodland Elementary School community, where we have been fortunate to experience something truly special under the leadership of Dr. Chetta. From the moment Dr. Chetta has arrived at Woodland, it was clear that she brought not only vision but had brought heart. She had created an environment where teachers were excited to come to work and students were inspired to do their very best every day. Whether it's in the classroom or in the halls, Dr. Chetta's presence was felt. She was outside every morning greeting the children as they arrived to school, and at the end of the day, she's out there waving them goodbye. That level of personal commitment to our children is rare and an invaluable quality in a leader. The positive impact that Dr. Chetta's had on our school is tangible. The moral morale, excuse me, of both staff and students has risen dramatically under her leadership. Test scores, particularly of our children's MAP scores, reflect this transformation. In 2025, our children tested in the top 62%, well above the national average. That's a direct result of Dr. Chetta's focus on fostering a positive and supportive learning environment. But it's not just about test scores. On a personal note, I'd like to share my own experience. When I approached Dr. Chetta about a concern in my son's classroom, she responded with incredible care and professionalism. Not only did she address the issue swiftly, but she followed up over the course of several weeks to ensure that the matter was resolved. My son noticed the extra attention, and he shared with me that Dr. Chetta had been in the class with him again that day, just checking in and making sure that everything was good. That level of involvement, that level of dedication to each and every child is something that these parents cherish, and it's not something that we take for granted. Dr. Chetta has done exactly what Woodland has needed. She's created an environment where both education and life lessons are intertwined in meaningful ways. Our children are learning not only academic knowledge, but they are learning the values of respect, kindness, and perseverance. As a parent and a member of this community, I can say with confidence that we are extremely satisfied with her leadership and the profound impact that she's had on our school. The Woodland community clearly stands proud beside her, and we're ready to continue to support her as she continues to lead us forward. I urge you to please recognize extraordinary contributions that Dr. Chetta has made to Woodland Elementary School. Please keep the best interests of our children in mind and please vote to approve Dr. Chetta's contract. Thank you for your time.
Lindsay Rodner, Monroe. I prepared some words, but to be honest, my son, I'm also a proud mom of one of the students that got up here, and I think that I probably couldn't do better than what he did. And I have to say that he admitted he hasn't always made the right decisions, right? He's a kid. But his conversations with Dr. Chetta and, you know, he's also not the most, he's smart, but he struggles academically. His discussions with Dr. Chetta have resulted in him having the ability and the confidence to get up here and speak in front of all of you. I don't know if many 11-year-olds or 10-year-olds could get up and speak in front of a room of adults. I know that there's a lot of adults that didn't have the confidence to get up here and speak in front of you. So that is a direct result of her and the confidence that she instills in her students and how she teaches them to be a leader and to rise above. So I want to say that. I also have two letters from non-tenured teachers that I'm going to be speaking their words because they do not feel that they are safe to get up here and speak in front of you as a board because they feel like their jobs would be in jeopardy because of what has been portrayed in this town, and that's really rather embarrassing. Dear Members of the Board, I am writing to express my wholehearted support for Dr. Chetta and to emphasize the vital role she plays in the success and spirit of Woodland School. I respectfully ask that you reinstate her contract as Principal of Woodland School. Dr. Chetta is an exceptional leader whose presence and dedication shape every corner of the school. She fosters a culture where staff feel supported, valued, encouraged, and encouraged to grow. Personally, I have experienced this firsthand. Dr. Chetta has always welcomed my ideas, allowing them to come to life not only in my classroom, but throughout our school building. Her trust in my vision has empowered me to be a more effective educator and contributor to our school community. One of the most remarkable things about Dr. Chetta is her consistent, visible presence. Her daily presence in the hallways, her genuine interactions with staff and students, and how she knows every child by name and remembers something personal about each of them makes her an irreplaceable part of the Woodland family. That kind of connection is rare and invaluable. It creates a culture of belonging that motivates students and unites staff. If we lose Dr. Chetta, we lose more than a principal. We lose a vital part of Woodland. Her leadership is the reason our school runs smoothly, and her absence would leave a noticeable void in the lives of our students and staff. I respectfully urge you to reconsider and reinstate Dr. Chetta's contract. Woodland needs her, respectfully a Woodland teacher. I am writing, dear Members of the Board of Education, I am writing to express my sincere appreciation for the exceptional leadership of Dr. Chetta, Principal of Woodland School, and to share how her guidance has positively shaped our school community. Under Dr. Chetta's leadership, Woodland has become a place where staff feel truly supported, empowered, and motivated to bring their best to work every day. She creates an environment where collaboration and innovation are encouraged and where each staff member feels valued and confident in their ability to make a meaningful impact. Her leadership not only inspires but instills a deep sense of pride in the progress and success we are achieving together as a school. Dr. Chetta leads with integrity, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to the students, staff, and families of Monroe. Her clear vision, student-centered approach, and thoughtful decision-making set a standard of excellence that benefits our entire school community. Whether she is mentoring staff, fostering family engagement, or implementing innovative and structural strategies, Dr. Chetta consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that both students and educators thrive. The culture she has cultivated at Woodland is one of respect, purpose, and high expectations. As a result, our staff is not only motivated but also more connected and proud to contribute to the shared mission of providing exceptional education for every student. Thank you for your continued support of Woodland School and recognizing the profound impact of such a strong leadership. Dr. Chetta is a remarkable leader and is a privilege to work under her direction as we continue to move forward. All I ask is that you have the respect to listen to the students, parents, and teachers that have taken the time to be here. Do your civic duty and vote appropriately. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robin Barrett. So I'm here today as a parent, community member, and most importantly, as someone who witnessed firsthand the difference a strong compassionate leader can make in a child's life. Dr. Chetta has been the heart of Woodland Elementary School. Every morning, rain or shine, she greets the students and waves to the parents, not just with a smile but with warmth and genuine care. She knows their names and their interests, and they see her as someone they could trust. I myself find it very comforting when I drop off my son and I see her there. In a sometimes scary world, at least dropping off my child at school don't have to be one of my worries. Last month, I was on the line to pick up my son, and almost everyone was dismissed, and I didn't see my son. I asked her if everyone was out, panicking inside, and she got right on the walkie-talkie, and she knew my son's name, and she told me he was in the last day of robotics after school, which I totally didn't see that email, so. This is this is the person running a school that I, as a parent, am extremely satisfied with. There was a difficult situation after that involving my son and another student that had him upset and feeling anxious. He didn't want to come to school anymore. Dr. Chetta stepped in not only quickly but fairly and thoughtfully. She listened to him and involved us and came up with a resolution that made my son feel safe. The next day, he was immediately back in school like nothing ever happened, and that right there signifies what an amazing principal you are. I believe the school is better because of her leadership. Removing her is a disruption to a school community that thrives under her leadership. Let's keep Woodland a place where our children feel welcome, protected, and seen, and that starts with having the right person at the helm. So I am from Brooklyn and moved five years ago. And, you know, I moved to Monroe because of the school system. That was my main priority, finding somewhere else to live out of Brooklyn. I have now a 19-year-old, a nine-year-old, and a seven-year-old. So we didn't experience middle school yet, but my daughter stepped in as a freshman in high school. My son, this is his first year in fourth grade, and in Brooklyn, we don't have sister schools. They go elementary, from kindergarten all the way until what we call junior high, middle school out here. And I was kind of nervous because that's like a, it's a change every time, you know? Like you get through third grade and then you change to a whole new school, and I just want to say that you have made that transition so smoothly. I am genuinely so happy every morning I see you. There's not a day I haven't seen you. And that, to me, matters, and it should matter to the Board of Education that all the parents are saying, I feel like I just repeated what every parent got up here and said. So please consider her reinstation. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Clausen. I'm a parent of a fifth-grade student at Woodland Elementary School. We stand here today united in our fight to reinstate Dr. Chetta as our principal. Her sudden dismissal has left a void in our school community, a void that cannot be filled by simply appointing a replacement. Dr. Chetta's dedication and leadership for three years has been the heart and soul of the school. Her dedication to our children is unparalleled. She's fostered a nurturing and supportive environment where every student feels seen, heard, and valued. Her leadership has transformed Woodland School into a thriving community of learners, achieving higher test scores. Our school has scores that continue to show growth in both ELA and mathematics. More importantly, Dr. Chetta builds relationships with her students. This has been the case for both of my daughters, who have mentorship under her leadership that I have come to value and appreciate. She has become a member of our family simply by the way she regards my daughters. As a mother, that is critical. The uncertainty surrounding Dr. Chetta's dismissal has created anxiety and disruption for both students and staff. Children are worried, teachers are concerned, and the overall morale of the school has plummeted. The stability and positive learning environment she's cultivated is now threatened. We need her back to restore that stability and reassure our community. My own daughter has been disrupted by this decision as she thinks of her principal as the best. She just recently giving her special Falcon purple and yellow roses as a gift for Principal's Day. We urge the school board to reconsider its decision. Reinstiting Dr. Chetta is not just about restoring a position, it's about restoring faith in our school system, upholding fairness, and prioritizing the well-being of our students. Let us Let us show our unwavering support for Dr. Chetta. Thank you.
My name is Paulette Valaro. I'm a special educational paraprofessional here at Woodland School. Tonight, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for the outstanding leadership of Dr. Chetta. As a staff member, I have seen firsthand and witnessing the dedication and the positive attitude that impacts our school every single day. I am so blessed that I work at Woodland and this district, and I just wanted to say that she is amazing inside and out. Thank you.
Erica Emmons, Woodland School teacher. I sent emails to the board members, and I wanted to personally thank the board members who took the time to write back and be on the receiving end. And of course, my email was in favor of Dr. Chetta and her contract renewal and everything positive. But I'd like to use my time tonight to speak on behalf of Margaret Hoskins, also a special education teacher at Woodland School. She could not be here tonight, so I'd like to read her note. To the members of the Board of Education, I'm writing to express my support for Dr. Chetta, who has demonstrated exceptional leadership, commitment, and presence within our school community. From the start of Dr. Chetta's tenure, she's embodied the qualities of a dedicated and student-centered leader. She's a constant visible presence throughout the school day, visiting classrooms regularly, engaging with students on the playground, and even supervising bus arrivals and dismissals. This level of involvement is rare and truly impactful. By being consistently present in every area of the school, Dr. Chetta not only builds trust and rapport with students and staff, but also gains firsthand insight into daily operations and needs. This allows for responsive leadership and proactive approach to challenges. It's clear that she cares deeply about creating a safe, supportive, high-functioning learning environment for all. I believe that strong, visible leadership is one of the most important factors in a successful school, and Dr. Chetta exemplifies this every day. I respectfully ask the board to reconsider their position on not rehiring Dr. Chetta, but to recognize and support her efforts, which are making a real difference in our school community. Thank you for your time and continued dedication to our schools. Sincerely, Margaret Hoskins, Special Education Teacher. And again, I'd like to thank the board for acknowledging my emails and being on the receiving end, and I hope you listen to some of the comments that I wrote about. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lutz, Monroe Township resident. I've got... I'm here in support, obviously, of Dr. Chetta. I've got two kids. The other in the Monroe Township School System. My son's in second grade, my daughter's in the fourth grade. I can tell you that my daughter's had an uphill battle academically throughout the years. One big thing that kind of sticks out in my memory is the daddy-daughter dance in second grade. She had no friends. She just had a really difficult time communicating and kind of getting out of her shell. And a lot of that changed when she got into the fourth grade. I can't attribute all of that to Dr. Chetta. Obviously, Ms. Emmons has been a big help, but what I can say is that she's been at the helm for all of that. Seeing my daughter grow through this year has just been something short of incredible to me. I do a lot of homework with her. Just seeing her grow both academically as well as getting friends and just getting a lot more confidence in what she does throughout the day, it's just meant a lot to me. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is earlier this year, our family just had a big house fire. We'll be displaced for about a year, and it was a big shock to everybody, all of us that lived in the house. But one of the big things that we just wanted to make sure of was that our kids were okay. There was a big outreach for us. There were a lot of donations, a lot of gift cards and things of that nature. But what was really meaningful to us is that she took the time to reach out just to make sure that she was okay, you know, making sure that everything was fine. So again, I could go through all the stats. I actually had a prepared speech, going through a lot of statistics, and everybody who came up before me kind of knocked us all out of the park, so I won't bore you with any of that stuff. What I will say is, just, you know, from personal experience, she's been just a complete anchor for my daughter as well as this whole entire school system, and I hope you guys consider her extension. Thank you.
My name is Margaret Nesby. My colleagues are Ray and Cheryl. Sorry, Ray and Cheryl. We are here, paraprofessionals, Woodland School Elementary School, as a community member to support Dr. Chetta's leadership. Dr. Chetta has demonstrated exceptional leadership, commitment, presence with our school community. From the start of the time as our principal, she has embellished qualities and dedication to the student administration. She is constant, always visible throughout the school day and engaging with the students at lunch and on the playground, playing basketball with the wrong shoes. She is also involved in everything 100% every day. Dr. Chetta is a roll-up-your-sleeves type of educator who... that works to put students and staff first, always. I believe she is the reason our school continues to grow and shine as a community hub for a part of a beautiful Monroe Township schools. As long as standing, members of the professional team, I urge the board to reconsider their decision and renew Dr. Chetta's contract. Lastly, I hope and appreciate the time and dedication to the Board of Education for our school district, and I know you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Kevin Higgins, principal, Monroe Township High School. You've heard from a lot of different people tonight in support of Dr. Chetta: students, parents, paraprofessionals, substitute teachers. I think it's important that you hear from some administrators as well. I think it's fitting tonight that we're having this discussion at the budget hearing. I would like to start by thanking you all for your continued investment in us. And when I say "us," I mean everybody: administrators, and teachers, and staff, and students. We're not here tonight talking about a 22% increase in taxes. We're not here tonight talking about closing buildings and selling land. We're not here tonight about cutting programs. We're here tonight to discuss the contract of a beloved teacher in the district... I'm sorry, a beloved principal in the district. I ask that you continue to invest in this community by approving Dr. Chetta, again, being recommended by the superintendent. I'm honored to offer my strong support for Dr. Chetta's reappointment as principal of Woodland School. Dr. Chetta is a dedicated and visionary leader who consistently puts staff, students, and community at the heart of every decision. Her leadership is characterized by integrity, inclusivity, and a tireless commitment to educational excellence. Under her guidance, Woodland School has flourished, not only in academic achievement, but also as a nurturing environment where both students and educators are empowered to grow and thrive. Dr. Chetta's deep understanding of curriculum and her support for innovation makes her an invaluable asset to the school community. Rehiring Dr. Chetta would be a continued investment in the success and well-being of Woodland School. Thank you.
These pedestals are not for shorter women. My name is Samantha McLeod, and I am the elementary supervisor of curriculum and instruction. Thank you for listening to all of us tonight, because I know that it is late. As both the current curriculum supervisor and the former principal of Woodland School, I'd like to express my strong support for Dr. Lena Chetta. While I have great respect for the decisions made by the board, I feel compelled to share my perspective on a colleague whom I have come to deeply respect and value. Dr. Chetta built upon the work that Dr. Lehman and I initiated at Woodland School, resulting in a smooth and effective leadership transition. She's a highly collaborative leader who works closely with her colleagues to foster ongoing growth for both staff and students. Dr. Chetta is an instructional leader, whose impact at Woodland has been both measurable and meaningful. Under her guidance, the school has shown growth in both language arts and mathematics, progress that can be directly attributed to her dedication to collaboration in high-quality instructional practices that I have witnessed myself. The data I have reviewed clearly supports this progress, and I would be happy to share those results with you at any time. As you prepare to vote tonight on Dr. Chetta's contract this evening, I respectfully ask that you consider the data and insights that I have shared. Thank you for your time and thoughtful attention.
Dawn Graziano, principal at Applegarth School. Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to make a personal statement on behalf of Dr. Lena Chetta. I've been in the Monroe Township School District for 30 years and have always had a tremendous respect for our Board of Education. Your role is not an easy one, and sometimes challenging decisions must be made. I'm also aware that I'm not privy to all the information with which you use to make your decisions. Yet, the decision pertaining to Dr. Chetta hits a little differently. Prior to receiving numerous abstentions in the voting process at the last board meeting, I had not heard a negative word about her performance. I've worked with her personally on a weekly basis and have always found Dr. Chetta to verbally demonstrate a deep commitment to her students and staff. She strikes me as the kind of leader who tries hard to build culture in her building, often through thematic activities that foster unity, engagement, and a sense of belonging among students and staff alike. Her joy in leading her school and desire to improve student education are qualities I've come to recognize and admire. As a member of our administrative team, Dr. Chetta is a true team player. Sorry, it's late, I'm tired. She works collaboratively with her fellow principals, always bringing a spirit of openness and collegiality to the table. She welcomes new ideas, offers her support generously, and contributes positively to district-wide initiatives. I always appreciate her contribution to our leadership group. Dr. Chetta constantly talks about how much she loves working here in Monroe, even over these past two months. If mistakes were made barring anything egregious, is it possible that they could be addressed with fairness, clarity, and opportunity for growth? This is how we educate. Leadership is about making decisions that are well-considered and fair. In my experience, when a person has strengthened their convictions, they do not abstain in a vote. To me, an educated vote means you've reviewed the facts, you've spoken to those who know about performance, and those with whom you consult are objective reporters. As our official governing body, I have faith that you will make the right decision, but I hope the decision is one that considers the children at Woodland School and the families, the staff, and all the colleagues that support Dr. Chetta. The tribe has truly spoken here tonight. Please hear them.
I just wanted to ask first, is there anybody else coming up to talk for Dr. Chetta? Because we have, like, another thing we want to talk about. So...
You can...
Go ahead. If they wanted to go, because I don't want to stop the momentum. So if there's somebody else who wanted to speak, then I... Go ahead, Dr. Chetta.
I want to take the time to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to use these few minutes that I have to share some facts and information about myself and our amazing school. Ours is what I refer to as the wonderful Woodland School. I say wonderful because of the students, some of which you met tonight, and because of the staff, they're here with me, and because of the Woodland community that we serve, and they're here tonight with me as well. I also want to make sure that I clarify that in March, my colleagues and my community were not here because we felt our work and data would speak for itself. Additionally, I was following the guidance of NJPSA. Today, though, my wonderful Woodland community is here, in purple, and we're ready to celebrate our successes. I'm one of those individuals who knew exactly what I wanted to be when I grew up. I wanted to be a teacher. I wanted to show others that education was the pathway to success. I'm a first-generation Italian-American. My parents came here to this country for better and for more, and I'm proud to say because of their dedication to education, all of my siblings, I'm one of five, two of them were here tonight, have higher degrees. I'm the first to earn a doctorate. I share this to explain why my career and why these folks are sharing what I refer to as our family approach. We listen to one another, and we work together to solve those concerns. I learned firsthand and early when I became a high school mathematics chair at the early age of 25 that the best way to build trust and transparency is by being an actual participant in the community. So I roll up my sleeves, I put my boots to the ground, and every day, I'm out there with my team, ready to make Woodland wonderful. In my capacity as principal, as the instructional leader of Woodland School, we created a community of shared learning and shared responsibility. Our staff is provided with planned, professional time to bring this mindset and shared approach to fruition. Our students are included, and you've heard about it, by participating in our growth log system and our monthly assemblies. Our monthly growth assemblies, our collaborative opportunities, support all of our school objectives, our social-emotional objectives, our professional development goals, our avid advancement via individual determination goals (we're the only elementary school with that distinction), and my personal leadership goals. Having all stakeholders on the same page builds a healthy learning space, familiarity with our goals, because we truly are growing together. As for our academic environment, you've already heard about it. Our school, when I started, was one of the lower-performing schools in all of the three grade four, five buildings. After our 2025 spring MAP data, we either meet or exceed our other four or five counterparts. It's exciting. These are a result of the collaboration, not just with the professionals of Woodland, but with the entire school district, including some of my colleagues who spoke on my behalf this evening. I believe in this work. I believe education is the level-playing field. I believe that all children, if given the opportunity, will reach their potential. I've been 23 years in education, 19 in educational leadership. I came to Monroe to make Woodland School better, and I've had the opportunity to do that. My ask of this board tonight is to follow the recommendations of my outstanding supervisors, Dr. Shanley and Dr. Lehman, and to allow me to continue to serve as the Woodland community and continue to lead this wonderful Woodland community. Thank you.
I'm an attorney. I represent the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association located here in Monroe. My office is here in Monroe for the last 30 years, and tonight, I'm representing Dr. Chetta. I appreciate the fact that the board is revisiting this issue after having considered the issue in March. I'm a great believer in process, because if the process works the way it's supposed to, we have some predictability. The world is very unpredictable. We don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. But again, if we have a process that works, we have some predictability. What's the process here? The superintendent evaluates all the principals, observes all the principals, comes to whatever conclusion she's going to come to with respect to their performance. With regard to Dr. Chetta, she's given her evaluations since she came here in Monroe, and all the evaluations are either effective or highly effective. And based on those evaluations, she has recommended renewal. She recommended renewal before March. The board didn't have the votes in March to accept that recommendation. I'm hoping that tonight, you have the votes to accept that recommendation. The process is supposed to be based on the evaluations. The process is supposed to be based on the recommendation of the superintendent. If we don't follow the process, as some people said here tonight, we're undermining everything that we stand for. If the message is that irrespective of what our performance is, we're still not going to be appointed, then what's the point of striving? to be appointed, then what's the point of striving? What's the point of doing the best we can? I sat in on the award ceremony that you had a little earlier tonight, and you were awarding to students recognition for what they did, whether it was with the band, whether it was cheerleading, and why were you doing that? You were doing that because they worked hard, they achieved, and they had the support of their advisors and their teachers. What we're asking for tonight is the same thing. We have Dr. Chetta, who's worked hard, who's turned the school around, who's created an incredible environment, this is a testament to the environment in that school, and she's worked with the superintendent, she's gotten the recommendation for renewal, just like you support the kids tonight in the award ceremony. We're asking that you support the superintendent's recommendation and you support Dr. Chetta. If you vote tonight to give her a contract for the '25-'26 school term, I want to emphasize, it doesn't mean that she has tenure. She started here in August of 2022. 2022. She doesn't get tenure until August of 2026. So if you renew her contract for the '25-'26 school term, you have a whole other year to listen to what the superintendent says about her performance, to listen to what the community says about her performance, if you have any concerns regarding that performance. You have a whole other year to assess her performance. So there's no real reason not to accept her renewal for the '25-'26 school term. People talked about continuity. You know and I know that if her contract's not renewed, there's going to be a lag time at the Woodland School. You're going to have a new person there, that person is going to have to learn the ropes all over again, and who's going to suffer? The community and the children.
The children.
The community and the children. So what we're asking for tonight is for continuity, to accept the process, to accept the superintendent's recommendation, and to accept what this community has said about Dr. Chetta for the last hour or so. She's a wonderful principal in a school that she's labeled the wonderful Woodland School. Thank you very much.
Sarah Sharma, Monroe Township. I have not been here in several months, but it seems to be that when I do show up, it's like always some kind of crazy event. And so I am here for a different purpose, but I do have to say, Dr. Chetta, that when Tarek was in your school, he did love your school, he had a great experience with you. You are a wonderful human being. I'm not really sure what happened and how this all happened, but God has a plan, so everything will work itself out. But, and I do have a good feeling there's going to be unanimous yes. So that's my good feeling and maybe my prayers. So the reason that I am here is actually because of the rehiring list. Unfortunately, I did not see Coach Lee Wodowski included on the rehire list. For those of you who may not know, Coach Wodowski, known to many as Coach V, he is both a 7th and 8th grade resource teacher and the head coach of the Monroe Middle School Wrestling Team. His role in our school community goes far beyond his job titles. Over the past two years, he has been a cornerstone of the growth and success of our wrestling program. When Coach V stepped into the head coaching role, it coincided with the expansion of the program to include 6th graders. That year, under his leadership, our team had an incredible season, finishing second in our conference. But his impact wasn't just measured in wins, he built a team culture based on discipline, encouragement, and personal accountability. Last season, despite the setback of not being assigned an assistant coach, Coach V took on the full responsibility himself. He never once complained. Instead, he showed up every day and gave 100% to our student athletes. He prepared and supported them, helping a few wrestlers, including my son Tarek, qualify for the GMC Big-Small Conference Championship. Coach V's influence on Tarek has been truly profound. In 6th grade, Tarek won the GMC title but lost in the final Big-Small Conference match. This year, he faced that same opponent in a critical rematch. When the match got tight, Coach V just said one thing to him. He said, "You could be the first three-time GMC champion at Monroe. Now go get it done." Those words lit a fire in Tarek. He came from behind to win the match and earn the GMC championship at 70 pounds for all of Middlesex County. Afterwards, thanks, afterwards, he told me, "Mom, I couldn't let Coach V down." That kind of motivation rooted in mutual respect is something special. I haven't yet told Tarek that Coach V may not be returning. I'm still hopeful that this decision can be reconsidered. Coach V is more than a teacher or a coach. He is a mentor, a role model, and a bridge between the middle school, the recreation program, and the high school team. He fosters continuity and collaboration that benefits athletes across our entire district. At the heart of every strong community are the people who invest in our children, so like Dr. Chetta and Coach Wodowski, who guide them, challenge them, and inspire them. Coach Wodowski is one of those people. He is an asset we can't afford to lose. I respectfully urge this board and district leadership to find a place for him within our schools. Let him continue the work he's doing, not just for the sake of one team, but for the betterment of our whole community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Wujakowski. I'm also part of the Woodland family. I can tell I have four kids who've gone through Woodland, and my Sophia loved Dr. Lehman. And all my kids speak so well of you, Chetta, Dr. Chetta, and I had no idea this was happening today at all. Sarah told me about Coach Lee Wodowski. So I'm also part of the Monroe Wrestling Community, and I just want to speak on behalf of Coach Lee Wodowski and to reconsider rehiring him. Being a wrestling coach, it's difficult. Part of it is the wrestling, but then a really big part of it is the character. When you're dealing with middle school kids, you have some of them that are highly experienced, they've been wrestling since they could read, and then you have other kids that want to try it out. So my daughter Evelina, who is an 8th grader, she's an 8th grade girl that decided she wanted to try wrestling. And Coach Lee, from the very beginning of the season, he reached out to me, and he and I talked, texted every single week. We talked every morning, like 6:30 in the morning before she had a match. And he wanted to make sure that I knew what the plan was and what the matchup was, to make sure that she was in the best situation to grow. I've seen my daughter change tremendously. Evelina's a pretty smart kid, she's in the advanced stuff, but I've seen her character grow a lot, her image of self change a lot, and also just joy. I think when you put a lot of hard work into something, you get so much joy out of it. And she continues to wrestle. She wrestled on Saturday, she lost every match, but she smiled. And she's convinced her older sister now to also wrestle. So two of my girls, because of Coach Lee, will wrestle for the high school next year. And then, and I want Coach Lee Wodowski to be there when my little one, Isla, who is a 4th grader, Ms. Chetta, has a chance to be in the middle school. He's an excellent coach, he's an excellent communicator, and he's someone who develops kids' character. Yes, he knows wrestling, but he also knows the other half of it. So please reconsider and rehire Coach Lee Wodowski. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to close the public forum, and we're going to switch on the agenda. We're going to move the Assistant Superintendent's report down so we can get to the Superintendent's report, so we can vote.
Thank you, President Fabiano. Before I even begin, before I even begin, I just want to let you know that our attorney, Mr. Weiss, had handed out the addendum, and that really is just a part of the nine-member vote that goes to BW.
Okay.
Due to our technology issues, which you are all aware of from this weekend, that was one of the things that were inadvertently removed through the technology issues, so now you have it in front of you. Okay? Okay. So I will keep this short and sweet. I normally provide a lot of information. I will just start out by saying I want to thank the entire Woodland community for coming out. As you well know, my recommendation is my voice, and I spoke a lot at the last meeting. I'm not going to do that again, except to say, my recommendation is my voice. I think extremely highly of Dr. Chetta, who I hired with great sincerity and who I continue to embrace and I continue to support, and I will leave it at that. I think enough has been said. We didn't have an opportunity to meet in the month of April, but we've had numerous activities going on. Our board, our student board representatives do an incredible job, sometimes better than myself and Dr. Lehman, in just sharing all the wealth of things that go on. I did want to just give a shout out to the fact that the OM Walk-a-Thon, it's the 8th Annual, is coming up again, and I believe it's May 18th, so for those of you that have an opportunity to come out, I come out, I sign up, I most certainly do not run, I stand, I talk, I chat, I walk. You can do the same. We're very, very fortunate here that we have unbelievable community members that come out for different reasons, and I also just wanted to make mention, because it was not mentioned on the students' report, we did have an incredible presentation of the Holocaust. We did give some awards this evening. So I did send out a community message regarding Yom Pashua, which is the Day of Remembrance, and we continue to support opening the minds of our children. I had the great pleasure of going and introducing, as well as participating and being there. I know Dr. Lehman was as well, as well as many of our other supervisors. So I did feel it was very important to mention, because it was an incredible opportunity for our children to hear firsthand, and I must say that the gentleman was 101 years old, one of the gentlemen that spoke. It was amazing. Okay, before I begin, we have two retirements. One, which we did give a level of applause, which deserves another, to Mr. Martin Griffin, a teacher of music for 24 years here at the high school. We wish him well as he continues to fly to his next endeavor. And our next retiree is Kathleen Sizik. She's a teacher of basic skills for 24 years at Mill Lake School. On that note, I will begin for my approvals. And I'm going to skip to nine.
We can go to the nine.
Do I do something wrong?
No, do we want to go?
I am going to nine, I apologize. I can go anywhere you want.
Oh, yeah, go to the nine-number vote.
Okay, yeah. Just making sure I'm doing everything right. Okay. So I'm going to go to personnel. As everybody saw, the lawyer did hand out an addendum as I spoke on. We are at the point where I am now asking, under the nine-member vote, personnel. It is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items AK through BW.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Ratner.
Can I just get a point of order? Are we doing both the personnel nine-member vote and the personnel continued nine-member vote?
That is correct, and the sheets that you got in the Excel spreadsheet
Okay.
designates all of the nine-member personnel.
It's the entire nine-member vote. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board, Ms. Bora?
I do have a comment specifically for BU1. I'm loving the sea of purple. I have faith, my faith in community is renewed today. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you for the hundreds of emails we've received. And I did speak a lot last month. I am just going to say we've gone through a month of anguish as a town, as a community, and I'm hoping that this board is going to do the right thing for the students, the staff, and the Monroe community today. Thank you.
Mr. Tifano?
Dr. Chetta, I just, I wanted to say how embarrassed I am that after all the love, inspiration, and just, I can't believe how much the community and your school loves you and your staff. And I'm embarrassed, because after all that hard work, and like I said, all that love and admiration, that you have to sit there with anxiety and tears in your eyes and with counsel and worry about your position in this town is, it's embarrassing. And I hope that no matter what the vote is today, that you never change the person that you are, because the world needs people like you in it.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, abstain on BU1.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Mr. Payne?
Yes to all, and can I make a comment? If you don't mind. Dr. Chetta? I know. You can ask my husband and my children, I'm a very tough parent with my children. Two of them are teachers, and they're tough with their students, and I really don't change my mind that much. I'm kind of like a tough Hungarian. But after reading all the emails and seeing all the people here tonight, I have to say that I'm giving you a tremendous yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes, Bob, I'm abstaining on BU1.
Ms. Ratner?
I need to abstain due to conflict on letter BK, number five, for Mr. Ratner, and then BW for Mr. Ratner. I don't have a number, so.
Ms. Sharma?
Can I just say a comment first and give my answer? Dr. Chetta, thank you so much for your wonderful job. It was lovely evening to see all these lovely, small kids, and still they are here. And of course, the school teachers and other principals and administrators, that you did a wonderful job, and I hope and I believe that you will continue to do the wonderful job. So my answer is a big yes for all.
Of course, yes, 100%.
Mr. Zeichner?
Me? Okay. Dr. Chetta, I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I also don't change my mind often, but this turnout was just amazing. And so as far as I am concerned, you have an enthusiastic yes.
Yes to all. Yes to all.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to continue on with the meeting. Dr. Chanley?
Yes, I will be happy to go ahead. Dr. Chetta? Mazel tov.
Mazel tov.
Under personnel nine-member vote, letter BX, it's recommended that the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, that the board reappoint the following certificated staff for the '25-'26 school year.
Motion?
Second? Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Alvarez. Any questions or comments?
He can't hear.
Oh. I know.
Mr. Zeichner, we can wait.
Yeah, one minute, we'll wait.
We'll wait. Are you okay? We'll wait.
He can't, Charlie can't hear.
Yell out, we got to go, 12 o'clock.
We have to go into a second closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, if I can, I just ask if we can take the conversation outside, because we would like to continue on with the meeting. I mean, we heard B, well, we have the motion on the table to vote on BX.
The nine-member.
Oh, his. Yeah, so, yeah, so.
It's letter BX, BX under nine-member vote.
Charlie, there's a motion on the table to vote on letter BX on the agenda.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on letter BX?
No.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
No, that's not a ten-member. That's not.
No, I remember both.
What would you have?
Um, Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Back to me. We're going to go now to the ten-member vote. Under personnel, it is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items A through AJ.
Motion? Second?
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. Bora. Are there any questions or comments from the board, Ms. Ratner?
Just a very quick comment. I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Griffin. I don't, my boys don't believe me, but I was a music teacher for a decade before they were born. And I actually had the pleasure of working with him doing marching band competitions. I would be the coordinator, he was one of the adjudicators. And, you know, he's built a fantastic program here over the last several years. And so I just wanted to thank him for all his work.
Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, no to O and AG.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Mr. Payne?
Yes to all.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Abstaining on letter M, and abstaining on...
I'm not off tomorrow. I'm not. I thought about it. What? Oh.
I'm gonna abstain on AG.
Okay, M and AG, is that?
M and AG?
Yes. Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all.
Ms. Sharma?
I'm gonna say no to O and AG.
Yes to A.
Yes to all and no to O and AG.
O and AG, okay. Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes, exception is O and, what's it? And I think it's AG, is it? I'll tell you in a minute. Get here with me. And AG.
AG, okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no to O and AG.
So AG does not pass, and we have one, two, three, four. So O does, everything passes except AG.
Next, Dr. Chanley, board action?
Apologize, yes, thank you. So, under... Board action for a ten-member vote. It is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through N.
Can I make a motion to, I don't know if I'm supposed to do this before or after, a motion just to table letter F for R5430 and 5440? Just so we can...
Does this motion come first, or does that?
That's him, I don't know.
Show me where I am, because I...
She wants to know if she can make a motion to table this before or after.
She can do it now.
I will make my motion, just to table that, so we can...
Discuss that policy.
Can we comment on that tabling part right now?
Yeah.
So just for public records, the reason we wanted to table 5430, and more specifically 5440, is because there has been a lot of emails from the community about taking out the weighted component of National Honor Society. So we are changing the requirements to make it a little bit more selective, which is good for the school district. But we should continue to take in account the weightage. And that's what the community is asking for, for students not to be discouraged to take honors and AV. So that was not how the first read came, and this was up for a second read. And that's the reason we're asking to table this, so that it can go back into policy. The administration has been in conversation. They would like to propose a different recommendation, which can be discussed in the policy.
So I can second.
Why are we doing 5430? There was no discussion about ranking class.
I agree, actually.
I'm sorry, just, it's 5440.
Just 5440. Because 5430 is just class rank.
Yes.
Do I need to withdraw 5430 from my tabling?
We're just gonna clarify that Ms. Ratner's motion is to table F as it relates to 5440 only.
Yes.
Yep, that would be the motion to table F54, 5440. I'll second that.
Second.
No, Ms. Ratner already made that motion, and Ms. Bora already seconded it. So now that was the discussion, so we can move, roll call.
Yes. Unless anybody has any more comments on it.
No, no comments right now. We'll talk about it during policy, or curriculum, or both. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, we have, now you have the motion.
So, motion.
Okay.
No, the regular.
The regular motion of the agenda, right, A through N.
Second. Which includes F252, and the one underneath it.
Yep, 5430. So Ms. Bora, you made that motion?
I made the motion, and I don't know, you seconded it?
Okay, Dr. Peck seconded it. Comments? Great. Roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
And yes, I need to recuse on letter A for Dr. Chanley and Mr. Snyder.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Lastly, under a nine-member vote, for board action is recommended the board approve the attached board action items O through V.
Motion?
Second, I'm lost.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Mr. Payne. Questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
So, just to clarify, is letter I we're voting on? Nine-member board action?
O through V.
O through V.
Letter I, O through V.
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I need to recuse on letter O for Mr. Lurie. And on letter P, I need to abstain due to conflict for field trips under Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, thank you. And it's been a very fulfilled evening. And it is Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers and staff are fantastic. Thank you.
Dr. Lehman, do you want to give your Assistant Superintendent's report?
Yes, and I'll make it quick. I appreciate you moving my report after the Superintendent's report, because it was always gonna be that thing between...
We needed to get the vote out.
So I just wanted to congratulate and thank our teachers. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. Last week, we recognized our assistant principals and vice principals, as well as principals. The nurses are being recognized shortly. Earlier in the year was the paraprofessionals. So everyone that works in the district, they're the true heartbeat, they're the true backbone of our district. And we couldn't do what we do to serve our students without them. So thank you for your support, thank you for everything you do. And I have one exciting partnership to highlight today, and it wasn't talked about yet, because we talked about a lot of things. But we're excited to announce that the Monroe Township School District's Spring Concert Series will kick off next Tuesday at the middle school, and continue through the first week of June. So keep an eye on social media, you're gonna get all the dates if you haven't seen them yet. But this year's series features a very special milestone in our musical community. For the first time ever, Jamesburg Middle School Band students will join our Monroe Township Middle School 7th and 8th grade band students for a combined piece at the 7th and 8th grade spring concert on Tuesday, May 28th, at 7 o'clock in the middle school. This collaboration is made possible through the efforts of Mr. Snyder, our music supervisor, Ms. Tiana Zirelli, the 7th and 8th grade band director, and Ms. Dunk of Jamesburg. And both of her JMS music teachers marks the beginning of a, what we hope to be an ongoing partnership between the middle school music programs, and help maintain a smooth transition for the Jamesburg students as they transition to Monroe Township.
I would like to say thank you.
Of course.
Very excited for that concert.
And that concludes my report.
I forgot to add one thing, though. Tonight was a celebration, and we should acknowledge that we did have all of our employees of the year this evening celebrated. And it was wonderful, and most of the board members were able to join us, so I did want to say thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Allen, your turn.
It is recommended that board action items A-G through V, oh, A through AG, be approved by consent roll call under a ten-member vote.
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Alvarez. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
I just really quickly, just wanted to, I don't know where it went, just for it to be... I'm good, we can move on. I'll bring it back up during other board business.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, recuse on myself on AA.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Mr. Payne?
Yes to all, but I have to abstain on your bill list, because I have a relative that's been subbing here. And also on AA, where it pertains to me for the school boards convention.
Okay. Dr. Peck?
Yes to all.
Mr. Puro? Okay. Ms. Ratner?
Sorry, I have a couple of abstains, so maybe he'll be back. I need to abstain for myself on letter AA for the School Board Association Workshop. And then, I think it worked. On the bill list, I need to abstain on checks numbers 06381, 06330, 06382, and 06737. And then, I need to abstain due to conflict on the addendum for 06874.
Okay. Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes to all, no on FR5440.
No, no, we don't.
No, that's, that's the...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Wait, hold on, then that's not the right number.
Okay.
The, oh, no, that's not the one, I'm sorry. You're right, I'm in the wrong place.
Okay.
Yes to all. Okay, Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is recommended that board action items AH through AI be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Alvarez. Questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes, and that concludes my report.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the board president's report. Very, very brief. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of the educators here, everywhere. I, for one, appreciate you and all the work you do, not only for my kids, but all of our students each and every day, so thank you. Mother's Day is Sunday. Happy Mother's Day to everyone. I know, it kind of gets lost in the shuffle. And then, also, I just wanted to comment on the Student and Staff Awards this evening. It really was a wonderful evening. I was very happy that we got to honor the student and the teacher that were simply heroic in the event that happened at the middle school. So it was great to see them both and congratulate them, so it was really a nice evening. And that's it, that's it for my report. So we're gonna go on to other board business. Are there any board members wishing to speak, Ms. Bora?
I just wanted to quickly speak about two events that I attended in the past month that I haven't been able to talk about. Work-based learning event here in high school. It was amazing to see the alumni panel there. I do have a high schooler who participated, got great advice from alumni, and, you know, local business owners. So kudos to the staff for putting an event like this together. And I look forward to what this will become in future years. I also, this was a community event, I felt. And the other community event I attended was the partnership between Barclaybrook and the Parker House. I went to Barclaybrook for an event where the Parker House residents visited and did a STEM activity with second graders. And it was, it gave me goosebumps, it was beyond incredible. That little media room with little tiny chairs had, you know, the entire A-spectrum out there. And our educators are doing a great job in building that community relationship. So I was very honored as a board member and as a parent for the other event to be able to witness the great work that's happening in the district. In the other board business, because we couldn't have this discussion earlier, I would like to touch on the policy discussion that happened in the policy meeting on public forum, and share my views, because I'm not a committee member. I really, really feel we should not be going over four minutes. No matter what changes we're making, we are one of the districts that does four minutes, majority of the districts. And I've been going to the NJSBA workshop every year, and attended these sessions on how public forums should be handled. Three minutes is what most districts give. So even if we were to, you know, change the format of this, we should not go over four minutes. If the aim is to hub the public and allow them to go first, by all means, we can take out, which, again, I have my hesitations again, we can make it not specific to agenda items. But for that also, we have to limit the first public session to one hour. We're here to do business, and if we make the public forum open to anything, not just agenda items, it delays us from doing business. So if public really wants to speak to something that's in the agenda, that's why we do it first, so that we can then do business. And for non-agenda items, I want to emphasize, I am the largest advocate you can find for public participation. But I do also want to remind people, we have a chain of command, we have accessibility to board members outside, we have emails for board members that you can write to. So a public forum is not your only way to talk to the board. It's your last resolve. That's how it should be treated. If you want to be part of, you know, if you want to make an impact on our decisions, you have a say, even without coming to these meetings. It's great if you come to the meetings, it's great if you listen into the meetings. But the first public forum is made agenda-specific to allow us to do the business. Today was, as gratifying it was of a community event, it did, it was almost two and a half hours of public forum. So I feel like keeping it agenda-specific will help us conduct business. And, you know, sticking to four minutes, maybe limiting it to an hour if you want to open to non-agenda items. And then if you've not gotten a chance in the first public forum, then unfortunately, come back again for the second public forum.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of where the discussion...
Yeah, I heard six minutes again and again, and I was like, don't make it six minutes.
We're not making any changes. We're keeping the policy as it is, there's no recommendations, we're just gonna keep it as it is with the two public forums.
I want to reiterate to the members of the public...
Yeah, the only thing that's changing is the committee reports aspect, but everything else is staying the same.
I couldn't access the committee reports, I kept trying.
Yeah, we can't, I couldn't find them, I would say, I found two of them, the other four...
I think there was some technical issues.
And I personally, as a committee chair, was only able to send my reports in at 2:30 PM today. And I don't know if it was too late, so, but I was able to...
I can easily comment, the technology issue that we dealt with. Ms. Zalinski, I have, over and over again, said how incredible and wonderful she is. For whatever reason, I'm going to call it corrupted file. I don't know if that's the right term. But you know when you have a corrupted file in a document? a document?
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, no matter what you do, that particular section is corrupted? No matter what Rashima did, I was standing over her, trying to work with her, she called tech support, she couldn't make it happen. She went home, reached out to board docs, "I sent that to you" to show you she tried. She couldn't make it happen. Saturday night, maybe 1:00 in the morning or so, she's like, "I'm still typing, Shari." She retyped the entire sections, and then when she tried to upload it to board docs, it showed that it was successful and it was not. So I don't know if this is the case. I will personally look at it and discuss it with Mr. Feldman. I'm going to assume perhaps the board docs uploading of the committee notes may be that case. I'm not saying it is, I don't know. I'm saying that it has been a nightmare, and we knew by public, 6:00 PM on Saturday it had to become public, and that is why she did it the way she did it.
And I just want to, so my comments are based off of the meetings that I watched, the video meetings. I have not been able to read any minutes, so I'm going to take this over to the next thing. I know this was the first time and probably the wrong meeting to try this, because we didn't have any time to spend on that. There are times when I'm not able to see the videos, and those reports are important. And I may not be able to see it the day of the board meeting. My board agenda review is, you know, I don't want to give excuses, but as a person with a day job and children and so many commitments, we find our time to do our agenda review, and that's why the agenda comes thankfully on a Friday, so that we find some time on the weekend. If I'm expected to then again log in before I come in for the meeting to read the reports so that I know what's going on, it's a little extra ask of the board members. And I understand the concern is that our meetings are too long. Can we find another creative solution to it? Yes, go ahead.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we all print out copies for all of us to have in front of us?
I like that idea.
Perfect.
Yeah. As long as I'm doing the work while I'm here, and there's time that I could glance through it, right?
Ms. Ratner?
So I like that idea. I guess my concern then would come from community members who wouldn't have necessarily those copies, because sometimes there are people that ask questions about what has happened in the committees that perhaps haven't watched the videos of those committees. And, you know, as you guys know, I've always tried to watch all the videos for the committees where I'm not a part of. This month, I was fortunate that I was at all the meetings, so I didn't really have to worry about this. But, you know, when I looked for the minutes, the minutes for the two committees that were present, one was for Lays and one was policy, and it was attached to those committees' agendas on board docs. Like, so I don't know, again, like, it could have been just that they weren't able to be uploaded, I'm not sure, but I just, I feel that we, I definitely think meetings need to be more efficient. I definitely think some of us, definitely not me, talk too much. But I do think that we need to find some way of...
Happy medium. You need to find a happy medium for the public.
And then just because you had mentioned this, the public forum part, I have, we've discussed this at least once, maybe twice, since we've been on the board. My thought has always been, you know, I'm a parent of three young kids, right? I know a lot of other parents of young kids. We saw kids that have state testing. Luckily, that was an agenda item, so, you know, but I want the public to be able to participate earlier. I also do understand that this is a business meeting. I would definitely not want to limit the time, so if it's a choice between those two, then let's leave it separate, four minutes, four minutes. But that's always been my support, was let's let, you know, we have a very large senior citizen population, maybe doesn't want to drive so late at night, but they have something they want to say. You know, I don't want them to have to wait until 11:00 at night to speak. Hopefully, they don't have to, but in those times, like, I think this is the first time our board meeting has gone this late in a long time, so hopefully that doesn't happen often. But that's sort of where I was coming from. And then just the only other thing I wanted to mention is, I know that the delegate assembly is coming up. I know Ms. DePain is our delegate. However, for all the board members, if you are interested in getting your certified board member or master board member certification, you do need to attend a delegate assembly. You don't need to go in person, you can register online and view it remotely, but you do have to do that in order to obtain those certifications.
And is this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
Actually, 8:00 AM for breakfast, 9:00 AM for...
I'm doing it virtually 9:00 to 12:00.
There's only three resolutions on Saturday, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Zeichner.
Yeah, I just want to comment that this was an unusual situation that we had, and I think the way you handled it, you should be commended. And I really mean that because people really had, you had to let them express themselves, and I think you handled it properly. And I don't think, if you look at all the board meetings since you've been present, I don't believe that you've let people speak a little bit longer, but with only a few seconds. That few seconds does not make our board meetings real long. That problem is one in terms of we need to streamline, we need to be creative and come up with a way to streamline the board meetings, and I've said that before. There are some things we can do, we can look at it from a creative perspective and come up with some solutions that all of us, all of us would be very happy with. I think we all want to get home at a reasonable hour. This situation...
Not today, but...
I thought, I knew I couldn't do a point order, but I tried it.
Thank you.
You know, I already had made up my mind, so that wasn't the issue. But you had to let them express themselves, and the support, you know, that was so important. That's human nature, and you had no choice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zeichner. I appreciate your kind words. Mr. Tufano?
Yeah, I just want to announce that on June 14th, the Booster Club is throwing a car show at the high school. There'll be food trucks and vendors, and hopefully, a lot of cars. It's to raise money for the students between 10:00 and 3:00, so I hope to see all of you and your families there, and if you spread the word, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Just one quick thing I forgot to ask. Someone had mentioned the high school's sign is not, isn't working again. I wasn't sure if this is accurate or not.
I don't think it will.
Never will.
I don't think we've ever checked.
No, it hasn't been for about two weeks.
The high school sign? It's been broken for some time. You don't have the money?
So it just still has not been corrected, was the concern, then? Okay.
Okay, so the next public forum. We have a public forum. Anybody wishing to speak? You have four minutes to do so. State your name and municipality for the record.
Percy Skirby, Monroe Township. I want to thank the board members who changed your vote and had a change of heart and voted to approve Dr. Chatta this evening. I know our district is better for that decision, but I guess we have to fire somebody at each meeting. It's really unfortunate what you did to our Director of Security this evening. I guess we'll be seeing this next month as well. I don't understand what this board is doing with constantly trying to fire employees. It's really not a good look for us here in Monroe. And when you change the, if you're following Robert's Rules of Order, if you're going to change the agenda, you're supposed to, in the beginning of the meeting, you're supposed to let the board know that, you're supposed to take a vote on changing the order of the agenda. I think it was really unfortunate, and I wondered why you were doing it, but now I see why. You wanted to fire Mr. Selby after you re-approved Dr. Chatta. It was really unfortunate that that's what this board did. And as far as the committee reports, I don't believe that policy had been changed with a second read. And Gazala, I have to, I have to reach out to you on this. You fought with me for transparency. We are going back to the days of no discussion at board meetings and not having real discussions. I don't know. Why didn't we, why didn't we want to discuss what happened in committee meetings? Did we not want to tell the public that Applegarth School might not open in September? Are we trying to keep that quiet because we didn't want to do a BG&amp;T update? You are here as elected officials. I'm sorry if it's late. Resign your position. But to say that you don't want to discuss what went on in committee meetings so that the public knows and has the ability to come up to the first public forum and ask questions before you vote, that is opposite of transparency. That is opposite, Gazala, of everything that we tried to change. We are reverting back to the past. It is long nights. Tonight, you could have been home probably by 9:00 PM if you didn't try to fire Dr. Chatta. That's on you. That's not on the public. They came out to support her because they did write in, and many people didn't get a response from the board. They read on social media, "We didn't approve Dr. Chatta because she didn't have as many people as Mrs. Garcia come out and speak for her." So what did we do? We organized a massive amount of teachers, staff, administrators, and parents and kids to come out and speak on her behalf, because that's what you said you wanted. So when that happens, you can't then say, "We don't want long meetings." You invited what happened here tonight. You didn't write, I know a few board members answered emails, but not all. They felt like their voices were left unheard, so, Gazala, when you say, "There's other ways that they could reach instead of coming here," it seems that only when you come here to this podium, this board listens. So I would say that I wouldn't agree with what you were saying. It should work that way, but it doesn't. And I would really hope that you would reconsider discussing what goes on in committee meetings. That is the foundation of what this board in Monroe Township has been doing for several years, for transparency. Why wouldn't you want to have discussions with your fellow board members? This is where you do your business. It's a business meeting. You have those discussions here, in public, so that everybody can see your discussions, your deliberations, and we can ask questions based on that. Anything other is going back to a board that's not transparent. Thank you.
I just want to be clear. Nobody here has said that we don't want to have a discussion about committee reports. That has never been said.
You stopped Mrs. Bora tonight. She wanted to have a discussion.
Your time is up. You can sit down. Your time is up. You can sit down.
I will. Thank you.
Your time is up. No board member has said that we will not discuss committee reports, and there is nothing that is hidden, there is nothing that is not transparent. The videos are live, our committees are live. Anybody can watch them at any time. Our reports will be available, are available for the community to review. This is an evolving process that we are working on to streamline the process, and the community is not being shut out in any way, shape, or form. We will have discussions on committee reports. Most of what comes up in committees is on the agenda for discussion. There are things that come up in committees that are not, that we absolutely should continue to discuss as a board during that section of the agenda. But at no time did any board member up here say that we will not be discussing what's in committee reports. I just want to make that perfectly clear. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I just quickly, Bob Valentine, Monroe. Good evening again. I'll be very brief. I just want to just say this simply. I respectfully disagree in terms of the public forum. I think personally, the town, in the town council, is five minutes and five minutes. I'm not sure why you're not doing what the town's doing. I think there are opportunities you could look at to try to streamline the meeting, something I informally shared with some of you individually. I'd like to bring my questions forward here, because it's not just addressed to you, but I want the members of the community here to listen, so I hope they get greater knowledge and appreciation of what we're trying to do. When I come up and ask a question, I'm really trying to help the people in the community mind, not be struggling with some of these things. And you think about, like, the budget's a good example. I've been on this on the town council, too. All the tremendous work, Laura, you and your team doing, all the hours that go into that. I have four minutes to ask my questions. You know, like, there's a disconnect there to me, that I think the public forum is a valuable part. I do understand, I don't want to be here either, this is crazy. I'm going to go home, shoot me. But I think you have to, I think you have to, you know, I think whatever your promise is, I don't think it's so much the five minutes and four minutes and four minutes. I think you've got to take a look at how you schedule events, how many things you try to do in one evening, and I know your time is very valuable, and you're very busy people, and I respect that. But I think at times, you try to pack too many things into one night, and I hope as you look at everything, that's something you're concerned. Thank you.
Ms. Fabiano, can I just say something? When I go to Middlesex County School Boards meetings, I asked around to the other districts, and I think we're one of few that actually videotapes and puts our committee meetings out there and does minutes. They all went, "What? You do what?" And I was like, "Yeah, we videotape so that everybody sees it." So we're one of few that does it, so I commend this district for doing it, so.
Ms. Fabiano, I forgot one thing on my other board members. I just wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Chan Lee. What happened tonight would not have been possible if Dr. Chan Lee had not shown the leadership she has shown to put Dr. Chatta back on the agenda, and I want that to go on record, that Dr. Chatta did not have a second chance if this leader here had not taken the risk despite some indications from the board not to do it. So I want to commend you, I want to thank you for your leadership, and, you know, this community needs to know that tonight happened because you took that chance again. Thank you for that. And to Mrs. DePain's point, you're right, we are definitely one of the only districts, but it has happened through the actions of the pass board and trying to get transparency. I have been involved here when the meetings, committee meetings used to happen in that room. You had no space to sit, you couldn't see what was going on inside, it was never recorded, no minutes. We have changed the way we do business to really be in touch with the community. And yes, today's meeting was an abnormal meeting in a lot of ways, but a lot of discussion on important things did not happen. And I know it's an evolving process, and I'm going to support you with that, but I think what we did today was an ideal. We should definitely go back and have a discussion, you know, through emails and find out what would be the next best way to do this. People need to know the key points that the communities touched on, even though they might not be on vote, but they're like, the example Mrs. Skirby brought up was great, the Applegarth situation, and from finance, the change in lunch prices. People are not following the agenda. They would hear it in a committee report being spoken out loud. They're not looking at videos, right? So it's something that we can work on together as a board, for sure.
Okay, so... Can we bring that back to policy to discuss a little bit more, perhaps? We have to go to a second closed session, so I have to, do I have to read the resolution again? Okay. So, we're closed session resolution, so whereas the Senator Byron Embert, Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed in Section 12B of the Act, and whereas the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure, now therefore be resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed, and that is the superintendent's evaluation. Be it further resolved, that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Action may be taken on any of the items stated above.
Motion.
We, motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. DePain. We do need to appoint an acting secretary in closed session.
I nominate Ms. Alvarez to do the acting secretary position.
And also, we have to indicate to the public the amount of time that we're expecting to make this.
So, an hour-ish? Give or take? About an hour.
Did I get booted as secretary?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez is the acting secretary.
Yeah, can we just, can we just have a roll call on that?
Can we have a roll call on, hold on, freeze. I need a roll call on Ms. Alvarez as the acting secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Roll call, or do we want, yeah, yes or no?
He could do it by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Maybe Ms. Alvarez is the one.
I guess abstentions.
Well, I have to. I mean, I do.